It's Tuesday, May 28th, 6 o'clock PM. I will call to order the Select Board and Board of Public Works meeting for the town of Rutland. We're meeting in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library. It's 6:00 PM, as I mentioned, Tuesday, May 28th, 2024. If we can stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I should mention that the meeting is being, we're on Zoom. We're being televised live on local access cable and recorded for re-airing on local access cable as well as YouTube and other social media outlets. Moving into the first order of business is the reorganization of the board. We had the election a couple of weeks ago. Harry, welcome back. Myself, welcome back. So, we need to reorg the board.
Congratulations to both of you.
Yep, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to keep the board as is. Leah Whitman as Board Chair, myself as Vice Chair, and Jennifer Ledger as Clerk.
Motion and a second is their conversation.
Yes.
Why?
Because it worked.
I'm asking you why? This is a new board, it's a new year.
But why? Because it worked. That's the answer you get.
Oh, so, let me ask you then. You're saying that if Paul and I are an officer, it doesn't work?
I didn't say anything about it.
Well, that's what you're implying.
I'm nominating who I think should be in the position.
Then I'd like to say I'd like to also offer myself as Vice Chair.
There's a motion on the table, and we have an opportunity to vote.
Okay. I'm disappointed in the board, to say the least.
Okay.
That purpose of the board is to also promote, if you will, or help educate others in different positions. This would seem to fly in the face of that.
I disagree.
I think if we look at, if I may, I think if we look at other boards and committees within town, they don't honor that. This board has been very historically good about promoting or encouraging the diversity within the officer positions. And I look across at the other boards and commissions, whether they're elected or appointed by us, we don't see that, in my opinion.
Perhaps it's because you don't have experience of people sitting on the same committees or boards as you do here.
There's a motion and a second? Additional conversation? Hearing none, roll call, Harry?
Nay.
Nay.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Whitman, aye.
So, for the record, I would like to notice that no one over the age of 60 has been nominated to be an officer.
I will also note, we were given time to discuss, and there wasn't anything specific to age about it.
Excuse me?
There was nothing about age mentioned, and there was an opportunity for discussion and amendments.
I am saying right now that I tried to nominate myself, did I not?
I don't disagree.
Okay, so that means that my age was being nominated, so therefore...
It has nothing to do with age, Harry, it has to do with a person.
Oh, it has to do with experience. Well, I guess then, that leaves me out too. Correct?
I have nothing to do with this.
I know.
Well, I believe it is.
That's why I...
Isn't it?
No, it hasn't. Paul, would, are you interested in taking an officer position?
Why not?
Okay.
Because you've already voted on the board, so...
That's right. So, and I said, I nominated myself, which, you know my age.
I am making a statement that the agreement has absolutely nothing to do with age. I agree with Tom's statement that I liked how the board went. I value Leah's expertise and her length on the board, and I feel that things went well, and I would like to continue to see things, how things go for the next year.
Well, one of the reasons I'm voting nay is because of what Leah has done at the town meeting and other meetings here. I would rather see someone else serve as a chair. And leave it at that.
Noted.
Those will be part of the minutes, will they not, Tamika? Okay.
Moving on, we have minutes, we have Treasury warrant and payroll. So, we have approval of Treasury warrant 24-24 and payroll 24-PW-24.
Sorry. Approval of Treasury wa, I make a motion to approve Treasury warrant 24-24 and payroll 24-PW-24.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any conversation? The, all the documentation is here, if anyone wants to take a look at it. Hearing none, roll call, Harry?
Aye.
Aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Whitman, aye. We have approval of meeting minutes. Let's do them one by one, just because we bounce back and forth between executive and regular. I believe everyone was here. These, first is the meeting minutes for April 24th, 2024. This was, uh... Yeah, sorry. The meeting minutes for April 24th, 2024.
Okay, and they can be released prior to, wait, what is this? This is just regular, sorry.
These are, these are, yeah, this is just like us basically adjourning to executive session.
Okay. I make a motion to approve April 24th, 2024, prior to executive session.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Conversation? Roll call, Harry?
Second, aye.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Whitman, aye. We have April 29th, 2024, these are regular meeting minutes. I believe Paul was absent for these, for this meeting. This was our last regular scheduled meeting, and this is a regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve regular meeting minutes, April 29th, 2024.
Any motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation? Roll call, Harry?
Second, aye.
Mattson, aye.
I think, I think you need to stay called particular, not here.
That's right, that's the one I wasn't there for. I'm sorry, I recouped myself.
Thank you. Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Whitman, aye. We have the executive session minutes for April 29th, 2024. This is the Town Administrator Contract Review filing, annual review. Given that this is still not officially settled, I would entertain not to be released at this time.
I make a motion to approve executive session minutes not to be released to the public at this time, April 29th, 2024.
And Paul, I think you were absent on this, on this one, so... One second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, Harry?
Second, aye.
Recouped myself.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Whitman, aye.
Make a motion to approve meeting minutes prior to executive session, May 1st, 2024.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
This is just the meeting opening to go into executive session, any conversation? Roll call, Harry?
Second, aye.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Whitman, aye. For the May 1st, 2024, executive session meeting minutes, I would say not to be released at this time.
Make a motion to approve executive session minutes not to be released to the public at this time, May 1st, 2024.
Everyone was in attendance at these, any conversation, discussion, corrections, anything? Roll call, Harry?
Second, aye.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Whitman, aye.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes prior to the annual town meeting, May 11th, 2024.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any conversation? Roll call, Harry?
Second, nay.
Oh, Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Whitman, aye. Thank you, Tamika and Jen, for all of those meeting minutes. They, we had a lot to get through, and thank you, board, for getting through them. We have a 6 o'clock scheduled public hearing. It is 6:10, I will open the hearing. It's for a common vic license for Coffee Lands Inc. at 249 Main Street. This is in the hallway where Baked used to be, over at Save Way, between Save Way and Center Tree. We have the public notice and the documentation, everything is, all the fees and permitting and everything is complete, right, Tamika? Otherwise, it wouldn't be before us.
Yes, so, there are a couple of outstanding items for the Board of Health and the Building Inspector that are final inspection matters. But after speaking with everybody, including Seth, as far as the hoodmet goes, they were all comfortable with the board continuing to issue the common vic license, and then she will just have to obtain those final inspections before she can open to the public.
Okay, and she's clearly aware of that and working with the Building Inspector in my guess timeline, anyway. Yeah. Does the board have any comments or questions about the application before us?
So, are we still outstanding on this, just then?
The departments that are outstanding are comfortable with the board moving forward with issuing a common vixler license, because for them, it's just a matter of final inspections.
And, this is, um... I think that they own a location already in Clinton that has been well-received by the community and others, so I think that this is a great asset to town. Looking at the diagram, it looks like they might have a little, is it true? They might have a little piano and like...
Yes, we noticed that, yep.
And a coffee lounge area. It looks like, kind of looking at their social media and website, that it's sandwiches and kind of a breakfast, lunch, kind of place.
Yes, and we're going to be working with the Economic Development Commission and the Town Planner to schedule some sort of ribbon-cutting ceremony and try to make that a regular practice for new businesses that are opening in town to get some, you know, some involvement and some attention to them, and we'll share on social media afterwards as well.
Awesome, yeah, because I know, I think Elena from Baked is involved in the Wachusett Business Association, but since the Rutland Business Association has kind of dissolved, we haven't done anything specifically for Rutland, so it'll be, it would be nice to have something back for... This is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public that has any comments or questions about the common vic license for Coffee Lands Inc.? No, does the board have any other questions or comments or anything? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion to close the hearing, is there a second?
Second.
To close the hearing, roll call, Harry?
Second, aye.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Whitman, aye. And is the board comfortable on voting on the approval of the common vic license as presenting pending those final inspection items with the Building Inspector?
Do we anticipate when that's going to be, or do we...
They're hoping within, excuse me, within the next week or so, but if the board is not comfortable, I can hold giving her the physical license until I can confirm that all of the final inspections have been done, and we can include that in the motion as well, if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, I think that would be, sure.
So, I would entertain a motion to approve pending the final inspection items and not to release the license until everything is complete.
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion and a second, any conversation? Is the board comfortable holding the license until final, everything is final? Having Tamika hold it? Roll call, Harry?
Second, aye.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Whitman, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Is there anyone here for public comment? Thank you, Tamika. Name and address, please.
Karen Narwold, Poma Gasset Row. Curious as to when they're going to be completing the paving on Poma Gasset as well as doing the repairs, corrections, whatever you want to call it, to the dam, as it will require the road to be shut down.
Yeah, so, the dam, I think, is being held up in Office of Dam Safety. I think the, which is the state agency responsible for offices for dam and seawalls in the Commonwealth. I think they're asking for a modification to the design of the dam. I think that was originally going to take place just after the 4th of July. We have not received a new date for that project, and paving, I believe, is next spring. So, it's still another year.
So, we're going to go two years without it being fully paved?
It's paved, so I think it was always intended to be a two-and-a-half-year project.
And so, once you hear from the dam safety, you'll put it out on the web so that people will know? Fantastic, thank you.
And before we complete the plan, we'll go to the board, but also consult with Public Safety to make sure that they're aware of the... Because as Karen mentioned, there'll be a closure, which will impact traffic and emergency operations as well.
And for how many days will that be closed, do we know?
I think it's much more accelerated. I think their goal is to have it be closed for two weeks, which it was going to be months. Months.
And we have easements and everything in place. I know I've asked this in the past, but, sorry, I live down where it might affect me. The fire trucks and everything can, ambulance can get down if they have to.
Yep.
Okay.
I think there was original, if I may, I think there was original consideration that it would be avoided until after the 4th of July anyway, just because of 4th of July in Rutland and not wanting to have construction or anything going on during that, so...
I'm more concerned about July than 4th. I'm more concerned about getting to and from work to pay my taxes, so that's what I just needed to know.
Right, no, but I just, I understand, but I wanted, you know, the consideration for access and everything.
You didn't give me an easement for gas money?
No, no.
Next Friday.
No, and Brittenell's not really all that great to be taken, so I'm like, ah, crap. I just wanted to know how long and where, that's all. We went through the same thing when they put the Wachusett Greenways underneath. I just needed to know, and people have been coming to me and ask. I said, "I'll go announce," and I'll ask.
Thank you, it's good. I think it was maybe going to come up in the Town Administrator update anyway, but I think it's good to have up, so, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Hearing none. Member comments, announcements, and Town Administrator update. I just wanted to thank everyone who came out to town meeting and the election. I always wish that there was more voter involvement from our residents for, especially for our municipal items. It's where kind of local government really impacts us the most. But I appreciate everyone that took the time out to do that. Congratulations, Harry, for another three-year term. And I think there, I've had a few people reach out that there's some confusion. I think the, that the ladder truck would be on the ballot again in the fall, and that's not the case. The ladder truck was voted in, as a capital item, at the town meeting, on our town meeting warrant, it was an article, and then it went to the municipal election that we had a couple of weeks ago for the debt exclusion piece, and that was the funding, and that was approved also. So, the town, the ladder truck, the new ladder truck for town, was fully approved, funded as a debt exclusion, meaning that once kind of the bill is paid off, that debt goes away and does not permanently raise the levy or anything of that. It's kind of, you took a loan out for something, and when it's paid off, it's paid off. I don't know the timeline exactly for the spending and borrowing for that, but that's, that, I had a few people reach out questioning why we were going to vote on it again in November, and that's not the case. So, I just wanted to say. Any other, I think, Paul, you had attended, you and Jen had attended the Events Committee Community Fair. Did you want to speak?
Yes, it did, on the 19th, at the Rutland Senior Center. And I must say that, you know, it was well-attended, both by town organizations as well as the citizens, and I was very well, it was very well put together, and I was much impressed with the way things were handled and put together over there. There were quite a few people there while I was there, and I was there for probably a good two, two-and-a-half hours, just talking with people and getting some of their ideas and their thoughts. So, yeah, it was, it was well-done, well-done.
I, I wasn't able to stay for very long, but I did go in when things were getting set up, and I had to go, Paul, there was definitely a lot, a lot there, and the tables were, were great with all the information and everything that they had. So, hopefully it was a success and we can see it again.
Awesome, very cool. I know for me personally, the timing was a little tough, that weekend is tough, but I think getting into the spring, the weekends are tough no matter what. So, I appreciate everyone that was there, whether they went to visit or were staffing a table or providing information, so thank you.
I have a comment.
Sure.
My comment goes back to the town meeting, and I was very disappointed as a Select Board member that I was not brought up to speed by the individuals who put on the presentation that there was going to be a presentation that allowed me the time to offer a different opinion. So, it seemed like there was no communication, either on an email, in the agenda, or anything, that stated that the town meeting was going to change in any way. So, I just want it noted for the minutes that the board did not notify, the certain members of the board who did the presentation did not notify the rest of the board members, and I don't know if Paul was notified or not, that this was going to happen. And therefore, it precluded any of the board members from offering a different opinion in their time.
If I may, I mean, if I may first, and that presentation, all the presentations at town meeting go through the moderator, and it's a moderator approval or not approval. And they're supposed to be factual presentations. That presentation was fact-based and...
Informational only, it did not express any opinions.
The problem is it did, because there were facts that were missing from it. So, if you miss, if you leave facts out, then it becomes an opinion. It's not a factual document. I was totally disappointed in the fact that it was mentioned that the town could receive up to, could receive 100% of the state's money.
Up to.
No, it was 100%.
I stated, I can go back and look in the meeting, Harry, it was stated up to 100%.
There was one point in the conversation where you said 100%.
Up to 100%.
Well, that can be up, whatever your memory serves you, okay? Whatever. So, my complaint is that you put it to the moderator without even letting the board know. That's my point.
I did not put it to the moderator.
You put it to the moderator.
I think it was AgCom that put it to the moderator.
Yes, yes.
Because AgCom was the sponsor.
Did the board know? Well, the board must have known it was going to be done, because you had this projector set up, everything was done. So, the board had to know because Jen gave the presentation.
The projector was set up for Austin.
Those were my slides, Harry. The, each article, which is brand-new, I think I'm, I think we, it's a goal of the community, and I think of this board to professionalize the way that we do things. I'll finish. Each slide had accompanied text from the warrant, articles 1 through 29. The presentation as presented by Jen, not representing the Select Board. The meeting that you attended, the informational session, she was very clear that she wasn't representing the Select Board, no, the Historical Commission, she was presenting on her own behalf. Due to the setup of the meeting room of town meeting, she, she could not stand where you stood as a resident, she had to sit next to me, but I think she was clear that she was not representing the board. And I do believe, I'll pull up the slides if we want to prove it, she did say "up to," which, that has not changed since the beginning of talking about CPA. It's always been very clear that if you're a 3% community, you may receive up to 3, up to 100% match. And it's the moderator's decision whether to allow a presentation or not. You recall last year, I presented some slides on the budget. I had asked the moderator. It was the moderator's decision whether to allow or not allow, no different than whether the moderator allowed you to speak or not at town meeting. So, this wasn't a board presentation, this was Jen speaking as an individual citizen, no different than your comments.
I find it hard that the community out in the audience would not believe that this was not a board presentation, because she never left the board.
Well, the board did decide to place it on the warrant.
That we agreed to, but not extend that into a presentation, which the only thing a board member could do was stand up at the microphone and offer their side of it without spending a 15-minute dissertation on how the CPA works. I find that really unhealthy for a board.
What I find really unhealthy...
Well, again, this wasn't an official board presentation, Harry.
Huh?
This wasn't an official board presentation. So, I don't understand why we're talking about the board when this wasn't on behalf of the board.
Then she should have gotten up away from the table to make the presentation.
She couldn't, Harry, because of the setup of the meeting room. There was no separate laptop. If there was a separate laptop, which I think is helpful and really good suggestion for next year, maybe we can do that, but this is unfortunately how the meeting room has been set up for years prior. I think since I've been here, this is probably the first time we've had actual slides. I think it's a good setup for, for folks to have an opportunity to see things visually rather than trying to flip through the pages. So, if you have suggestions for how to improve that next year, I think obviously recommending that to the moderator for ways to improve town meeting, but as you know, this is kind of the moderator show. He's the presiding officer of the legislative body.
And what is he on? Agriculture.
He's on the Economic Development Commission, AgCom, what else?
But actually, the moderator, but actually moderator for this town meeting was Scott Davis. And he's on the Historical Society, which is a nonprofit itself, and not involved anywhere else. I mean, he's active at the community, at the senior center, but he's not...
Okay, I, I guess I'm kind of flying in the wind, because I don't expect any of you to see my side of this in what it looked like and how it was perceived by the town. Because I'm not the only one sitting here saying that. So, I mean, sitting here, other townspeople who saw what happened, so... We'll leave it go at that, that's what you did, you feel right in doing it that way, and that's for the town to decide in the next election.
I think what has been really detrimental to town recently has been all the misinformation that has been out there and the just blatant wrong-twisting of facts. And I think Jen was trying to, I don't want to speak for you, Jen, but I believe you were trying to just set the facts straightforward so that the residents who were there and voting could have an educated, with facts-based decision and not have anything skewed or misinformation.
I have a slide here. Being a 3% community maximizes our potential to get up to 100%, 100% matching state funds. In bold text, right here.
Okay.
But if, never mind. Actually, no, I'll make the comment. No, 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 I think my update's next. You made a comment that it, that it takes against the tax levy, as you recall, that these funds have nothing to do with the tax levy. This is a separate funding source. So, if we want to make comments about what a member presented in a presentation at town meeting, the same argument could have been made about your comments, Harry.
Except, my comments were made, let's leave it at that, because we're going to get nowhere and waste time at this meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
I was disappointed in the way it was handled. The board, the minority of the board was not included, let's leave it at that. Apparently, the minority of the board at our age can't think for themselves, so...
Moving into the Town Administrator update. Austin, thank you for providing us the update yesterday on the holiday, I appreciate that. And I'll let you go through it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I shared this update with the board last night, posted last night on the town website. I won't go through all four pages, but I'll just go through some of the highlights. We are getting close to the end of the year for FY '24 budget. You'll see in tomorrow's update from the town accountant that we, I think, are looking fairly good on most of our line items. There's some exceptions, Medicare insurance, legal services, treasury collective salary, a slight deficit in snow and ice, but we're expecting a healthy replenishment of free cash at year-end. Also want to thank Members Ledger and Mattson for participating in the outstanding Town Employee of the Year ceremony. Happy to share and congratulate again Lynn Miller from the Board of Health and Building Department and Captain... Happy to uh, share and congratulate again Lynn Miller from the Board of Health and Building Department and Captain Justin Basset from the Fire Department for the uh, for their uh, work and and congratulate them for receiving this year's award. Uh, they do a lot of good work every day on behalf of the Town of Rutland. Uh, and both of them are are valued members of their respective departments in the overall organization. We're grateful to have them. And again, want to thank the the board members for participating and members of staff as staff as well. We had some pretty good cookies from baked.
Baked?
Yeah.
No, um, Rutland Marketplace.
Oh, Rutland Marketplace, sorry. Baked, your cookies are good too. Um, moving on to some projects and initiatives, uh, a lot of things going on project wise. Um, we had the kickoff meeting with representatives from Western Sampson and La Rochelle Construction. Uh, the winning bidder uh, for the public safety facility and library repair project. Um, project is anticipated to begin uh, within two to three weeks. Uh, not sure which building they're planning on starting and yet probably the public safety building. Um, the intent of the project is to minimize as much as possible interference with the public, uh, especially for this facility. Um, want to thank Dispatch Director Moriadi and members of the Public Works Department for assisting with installing um, internet to the wood studio and the town pool house. Uh, this has been kind of a gap, especially in the wood studio with no internet service. Um, now that this is kind of a formal conference room, there's a TV there, there's both, there'll be public wifi. Uh, looking to make that also a kind of a hybrid virtual meeting room as well. Um, also a great opportunity for the Recreation Department to begin accepting credit card payments at the um, at the town pool, also minimizing some of the risk of uh, accepting cash as well. Um, also you'll know that I sent an email earlier today, the Town of Rutland has received uh, just over a hundred and sixty-nine thousand from the Community Compact Program to expand our town fiber network. Um, great, great project. Um, most of the buildings downtown, library, DPW, Town Hall and Public Safety Facility are connected to uh, internal fiber network. This will uh, include all municipal buildings as well as the water treatment plant, um, and the pump house. Um, so this is um hundred percent paid for through uh, state and ARPA funds. Uh, so we'll be acquiring the smaller equipment like the routers, things like that from ARPA. The rest will be covered. The fiber and labor will be covered from the Community Compact Grant. So want to thank uh, the state for their assistance in that. Um, that'll take about two months to complete. Um, you recall that that's also a good opportunity for the town. We're currently leasing our fiber network from Spectrum at a very significant cost. Um, this will reduce our costs from about six thousand dollars a month to about seventeen hundred dollars a month. So significant reduction in costs. Um, and also we own the network now, which would be really, really good for us.
Austin, can I, oh, sorry, go ahead, Harry.
Yep.
The IT people we have now, can they work on that?
Oh, yeah.
Or do we have to hire new ones?
No, so they can work on that. So so you mean the installation of the fiber?
No, no, no. Once it's up and running, if there's a problems, they can get into it and fix it.
So they can work on our network now, but they're limited because they essentially have to ask Spectrum for permission every time they want to do something. So believe it or not, the uh, folks that are familiar with the TV in my office, I can't even project to it because Spectrum won't allow this laptop to be connected to the network. It's really odd. Um, so because we'll a hundred percent own the network, um, our folks can, they have greater access and ability to control the network as well.
Okay, cool.
That's a little bit of a follow-up. Can we just ensure that there's um, capital needs plan in place? Because I think a little bit of what got us into a bind a few years ago was there was a sudden end of, not sudden, but uh, end of life of equipment that maybe wasn't planned for as well as it could have been. Um, and Spectrum obviously made us a whole lot of promises that they didn't uphold. Um, but just so that going forward, we can continue to maintain our own it ourselves, but have the plan in place as equipment is coming for end of life or whatever that it's not a sudden, we have to do something.
Yeah, I think we're looking to expand the way that we do capital planning alongside CIPC this year, I think. Getting a little bit more involved in some of the departments and the capital needs. Um, IT I think is one of them. Obviously, I know, I think it was CARES Act that was used to upgrade our servers. Um, certainly I think there's a lot of other equipment um, within all of our facilities that need to be maintained. So we'll be sure to work with them on making sure that we have an accurate assessment of our needs on the IT front.
Thank you.
Yeah. Does this affect our contract with Charter, Spectrum?
So our contract is, uh, will, I do, do you mean the?
Well, what we're doing here, we're taking the IT stuff away from them. Does that?
Yeah, so that contract uh, was a three-year agreement uh, that's due to expire at the end of this calendar year. So this is very timely. We'll install the um we'll install the fiber over the summer. We'll install the equipment late summer. Um, so all of the um, necessary um, equipment will be in place by the time it expires so we can transition right over uh, to the new network. We'll probably have about a month of redundancy, um, just to make sure that everything operates correctly and then January one, we can switch over to our own network. So yes, to answer your question, we won't be um, continuing that agreement with Spectrum.
Okay. Uh, does that bring up any capital needs for CIPC they should be aware of?
Not as of now. Um, this will all be.
This is kind of a CIPC. I mean, I know it's planning, budgeting for the future and I kind of brought it up, but just as it's a mind mindful piece and I'd rather not get into
Yeah.
a lot of detailed committee specific conversation.
Yeah.
It's for consideration.
We'll talk about it in August. Um, to continue, again, I don't want to take too much time. Hopefully we can make this a record select board meeting. Um, just want to thank uh, Safe Place Director Sarah Galvin. She's done an excellent job from the get-go, obtaining grants, managing the project. Um, if you had a chance to go behind Naquad playground, the uh, project is is near completion. They tore down all the old equipment uh, of the playground and quickly installed the new equipment. Um, I think what's remaining, I haven't driven by it today, but I think they just need to install the port and place rubber. Uh, mulch has been installed. You'll see in the photo in my report. Um, and the project looks good. And uh, I think uh, some families that I spoke to, um, they were looking to jump on, but I'm like, no, it's not open yet. Um, so just again, want to thank Sarah uh, for her efforts. Great project and I know folks are very excited.
Do you plan to do a ribbon cutting or anything for it? Do you know between Sarah?
I don't think there was, but we can do one.
Yeah, it would be kind of fun and nice to remember.
I think we've got the, do we have a ribbon? We can get some.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And this is not just a safe place playground. This is for the entire town. It's a safe place, came up with the money
They did.
and did all the job to get it done.
Safe place along with the Naquad PTO.
Okay, great.
Um, the Public Works Department, uh, in coordination with the Wachusett Greenways and their contractor Salvador, R.D. Salvador, um completed or nearly completed the culvert replacement project on the rail trail along Miles Road. You recall over the winter, this caused some pretty significant flooding on Miles Road. Um, just simply do is an old culvert for the rail trail that collapsed in what should be this big was about this big. Um, so they completely replaced it. You'll see in a couple of photos that I put in my report. It's a much larger culvert than before. It's about a five-foot uh, culvert. Um, the flow looks really good. Um, also want to thank Concom for their um kind of swift and speedy approval and some of the state agencies that helped us kind of get this along. I think overall this this project looks a lot better than it than it did. Um, we also um, were able to kind of rehabilitate the uh, the rail trail a little bit to um, you know, make it as close as possible to what it was previously. So um, I'm not sure if it's open yet, but um, I walked up there, so it's pretty safe.
If, you might not know this, but do you know is there plans to do any sort of beaver prevention? Um.
So, g- great point. The beavers like two days later had already gotten into the culvert, so they had to clear it out. I think the Greenways are looking at getting a screen.
Okay.
But then also with that, obviously you got to maintain it. Um, the screen that's alongside Miles Road, DPW has to constantly kind of clear up a little bit, but they're clever little animals and they figure out ways to
Right.
get where they want to go. So I I believe they're looking at it though.
Yeah, and I know the more you you trap and take out, the more new populations move in, so it's not always the best, you know, it's kind of trying to figure out a way to work with them rather than totally against them, so.
Um, we uh, staff and I, so Chief Monica, Chief Monaco, Dispatch Director Moriadi and the uh, School District Facilities Director Mark Wild and the building principals for each of the three schools participated in a uh, walkthrough and demo uh, for the new security system upgrades and installation at all three schools. Um, this is a pretty comprehensive project. Um, pretty much cameras everywhere, access control, um, some other security measures that I can't mention right now. Um, will be installed in all three schools. Um, this will be likely a two and a half, maybe three-month project to be completed over the summer. Um, so everything will be in place for the new school year. Um, so just want to thank the um, school for their partnership and and kind of really guiding us through each of the buildings to see what was important to them, especially for cameras, to make sure that there was accurate and adequate coverage um, everywhere. Um, so this will be a a really nice system for the schools. Um, a layer of security and also just uh, comfort, I think, for the students and also the staff there. Um, and it'll be also directly tied into our dispatch centers as well.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Uh, just a few more. Um, DPW made quick work. I want to say like two days later after town meeting, they said, hey, can we buy those vans? So we did place an order for the two uh, vans for the DPW. Um, actually slightly under budget. I think we had a hundred and five thousand allocated. It was about one oh three um, for the two vans. Um, uh, more competitive than state bid pricing, which is pretty good. Um, anticipating delivery um, of the vehicles within three to four months, maybe a little sooner, but estimating um, three to four months.
Question.
Yes, sir.
How do the employees feel about that, you said?
Uh, well, I only spoke to one. Mark is very excited. Um, you'll, you know very well, Harry, I think I wouldn't even recommend you step up into the vans.
I know, I've seen.
But we'll go right through.
Yeah.
Um, I, yeah, I I think even if we were to get a five-year-old van, it would be so much better than what they have now. Um, so I, I'm sure they'll be very excited. And we'll be trading in the, they're not going to give us anything. But we're just going to trade those in and prescribe, get rid of them.
Yeah.
Uh, and then just finally, we're uh, moving through the municipal facility space needs analysis and feasibility study uh, with Western at Sampson. Um, they were out here a couple of weeks ago interviewing staff um, at Town Hall and the NX and also the um, Community slash Senior Center. Um, the intent of that walkthrough and and kind of kickoff was to gain an idea of what each department's needs were from a square footage perspective. Um, that will then turn into um you know, kind of a recommended, not only floor plan, but also just recommended square footage. So for example, uh, Tamika needs a really big office, so making sure that um, based off of the comments.
I know I need at least a chair when I go in there.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Uh, but we also wanted to make sure that there was adequate meeting space. As you know, there's really no place to meet at all in Town Hall. Um, you know, we don't have a secure mailroom or um, or um, copy room, things like that. So um, as we're looking to plan ahead for the future, making sure that the needs of the of the staff and the community are met as well. So um, the next steps over the next few weeks, we'll be receiving kind of the draft of the study, um, with the recommended um, space, but also some proposed renderings. Um, the initial proposed renderings will um, include recommendations with the existing footprint and possibly a small addition. Um, if the board and the community decides that that's not adequate, they'll also do um additional renderings um, for potentially a new facility if that is what the community was looking for. So try to make the best use of what we have first, if not new facility. Um, speaking of one of the facilities, if you go upstairs in Town Hall, you'll notice it's much more organized. Uh, want to thank um, Assistant Town Clerk Ben and Tamika. Last week, Thursday, they spent several hours upstairs cleaning and organizing the larger meeting room. You recall it was a little bit of a, I mean, you call it a maze.
An obstacle course.
It was an obstacle course, slash fire hazard, slash safety, whatever it is. Um, so we're actually looking to, the reason for doing this was, one, make it a little, look a little bit better, but taking inventory of what we have so we can declare them as surplus um, for a potential online auction um, over the summer, probably. Um, which will net us some miscellaneous revenue, which is good. Uh, and then we're um, we're in the bidding season, so we're um, we have bids due for the water treatment plant chemicals uh, due on Thursday and uh, Public Works road materials. So that's like gravel, um, sand, things like that. Will be due next month and then we'll um, also be publishing very shortly, um, highway, um, asphalt paving. Um, and then from that bid, we'll be going through the recommended paving list for this year.
And if the highway asphalt paving was, the plan was to do one comprehensive bid and to, in hopes of getting best price and then triaging where that work is done.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we essentially, we bid on the materials and the labor um, at a rate and then um we kind of take that and we look at our needs and we do as much as possible with what we have from chapter ninety.
Thank you.
And happy to take any questions.
Are there any, we kind of went. I know. We kind of have, we've kind of took questions as we went, but are there any other questions for um, Austin? Thank you and thank you, Tamika and Ben. And I think some DPW helped also with the.
Yes, yep. Ben and Joe were a big help.
So that's awesome to start getting through some of that and free up space um, to to see what we can do with the freed up space.
Absolutely.
And congratulations to the employees and thank you, Paul and Jen for attending. I think it's a huge testament to to town that we have dedicated employees like that and I appreciate you two being able to to attend and and honor them as well.
And yeah, I just wanted to add, um, there were some really cool finds upstairs and so we involved a couple of members of the Historical Society and we had Ann and Scott come up and see if there was anything that they wanted to keep for the Historical Society. Um, so they kind of combed through and they picked what they want, wanted and then um you know, we kind of coordinated with the departments to make sure that it wasn't something that a a specific department wanted. And then um, just from Thursday alone, I have a list of thirty items that, you know, are are worth something and can go up on the municipal actions, so. And Ben was a a great partner to to help, so I really appreciate his help too.
Awesome. I bet it was hot up there too.
It was so hot up there that day. It was, but we were determined.
Thank you. Um, we don't have, we currently don't have anything listed under old business. Um, under new business, we have as acting as Board of Public Works. Um, we have uh, abatement requests, I believe four of them for the stormwater utility. Um, as I'm sure the board remembers, we do hear it from time to time, water sewer abatement requests. Um, and now with the new stormwater utility, um, this is probably going to be similar to our water sewer abatement requests. Um, so Tamika, did did these go through DPW at all for vetting or anybody else before coming to us?
Um, no. So we we did confer with DPW and they did not feel that they needed to be a part of this particular process. Um, I did confirm with that all four of the bills were paid because I explained they have to be paid before they could potentially be abated. Three of the four had already been done. The last one was taken care of last week. The Treasure Collector's Office is in the loop on on these as well, that these are currently pending. Um, I would say that the difference with the stormwater utility versus water and sewer is that with the stormwater, there's very specific criteria as to who gets billed and it's whether or not it there's a, it's a developed parcel. So you will find that there are, two of the requests are because the parcel is not developed, there's no structure on it. Um, one of the requests is because the resident has since sold the property to someone else and is looking to abate a portion of that. Um, and then the last one makes the argument that living in a multi-unit dwelling, that the individual unit should not have to pay the fee. So again, it's completely at the discretion of the board. Um, but maybe just slightly different than the water sewer payment requests.
Thank you.
Question. Do you know how the HOV fee would work then versus individual tenants in the HOE? For example, if you have six tenants in the HOV at forty dollars each, that's two forty. Does the HOV get billed for two forty or just forty? How would that work?
Yeah, so um my recommendation for this particular application is to not grant the abatement. Um, I think it's staff's opinion that this has its own parcel ID. It's a developed parcel. Um, thus they are contributing to the stormwater system. Um, or contributing to polluting rainwater and and creating stormwater. Um, I think that would be. Um, I think that would be, uh, a decision made by the HOA if we did kind of assess it that way, uh, but we're not. Each individual parcel has received a stormwater bill here. So if we did have that, I think you would, in all likelihood, would then just split up the fee among the six. But again, that's their decision to make. But in this case, this property owner received a stormwater bill for the forty dollars, paid it. I think it's our opinion that, um, this particular application should not be granted. I don't think we disagree with the other, um, three abatement requests, especially, um, the two that are owned, I can't say the name, um, that have no, um, you know, that they're not developed. Um, I think that was just an oversight on our part, including those in the overall list.
Have those been corrected already?
Yeah, they've been removed from next year's system, yeah.
The reason I asked that was, my familiar familiarity with HOVs is that they are more of a maintenance organization for that area, not for, they don't pay the taxes on the house and all that kind of stuff. So I just didn't know how you had thought about that.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree with you, yeah. But, you know, again, it's, I think some HOAs are a little bit more active than others, but it just really depends on the construct, overall construct ever.
Um, so it sounds like it's kind of staff recommendation going through everything, um, for the first one, which is the mixed-use, um, building to not grant. Um, and then the other one that's asking for the prorated because the building was sold, um, to abate and that as the prorated amount. And then the other two, they're undeveloped parcels to also abate because they're undeveloped parcels. Is that a good summary of it?
Yeah, the prorated one is really your call, I mean, you can make the argument that, you know, they stole the forty dollars prorated or not, but I think that's your call for what to do on that case. Um, I don't know if there's been other instances where the, the board has prorated or abated, uh, on a prorated basis for some other kind of payments, probably not, but.
Yeah, for water and sewer, when you sell properties though, you only pay for the time that you're there?
I don't know.
You, I think that's usually something that's involved with the closing when they calculate all of that. Because this is so new, the, the property closed in February and this bill wasn't issued until mid-April, so it's nothing that they, they would have known about or accounted for. So I think that's why you've probably never gotten an abatement request for something like that with water and sewer, because they, they calculate it.
Do we think, because this is a tax bill, that moving forward, that this would also be part of that whole, if somebody sells their property, that they would look at this as a? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's a similar rationale, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a tax bill.
Great.
Oh, utilities, well.
Yeah, but it's not based off of like usage, right? So it's like just an overall flat thing, so I can understand the, the similarities there. That's why this is a weird one, it, it's really your call.
Well, but, but I guess, thank you for pointing that out, Karen. Um, my question being, during the sale of a property, it's usually the, during the closing process, that they'll take care of those.
Yeah.
The property taxes and whatnot, if they don't do that for utility bills, is that something that we're going to have to know moving forward? And if people are looking for an abatement on something they've already paid? Uh, what I'm trying to say is, do we need to have a policy that states it's only going to come to the town? And we have a policy that says if you sell, sell your property and you provide that documentation, we can?
I have to take a, this may already be in the draft rules and regs that, um, Weston Sampson is working on for us. Um, there is something about the stormwater fee, uh, and the utility in there. Um, but if that's, you know, that's certainly something I think for a future discussion, maybe for the, the board to have, if, you know, if you want to approach it that way, so.
Just curious. Cause I, I mean, we, we do this once and it's going to start coming, so I just want to know what we're going to plan to do moving forward and what that would.
Yep.
Look like.
I mean, I think because this is billed, stormwater will be billed once a year, whereas water and sewer is billed quarterly. So I think water and sewer tends, I mean, have a more frequent bill. Whereas stormwater, I think, so I think it becomes a slippery slope as far as, I think to your point, like, then we're not receiving the entire fee for a parcel.
Right.
Or it becomes onus of the, the new owner, so it's.
So we'd have to send the other half of the bill to the new owner for that year.
Right, so it should really just be the, in, in my mind, and I'm up for discussion on this for sure, it should be the property owner, uh, at the time that the bills are sent out is responsible for that. If there's a sale or something, then they figure that into the sale price or, or whatever, I don't, I, I don't know.
I mean, ultimately, this is like any other utility, you know, if it's left unpaid, it can also be leaned, so.
Right.
You know, kind of goes through that similar process of unpaid as well. But, you know, I, I'm not sure that the recommendation would be to lean the remaining, you know, twenty, thirty something dollars there. I think whatever the board decides will move forward.
Right.
I'm just thinking like precedent, kind of precedent setting wise, like, um, policy. Paul, Harry, do you guys have any insight on this?
No, I'm fine with what Austin said and in terms of how we're allocating yeses and noes of what's going to approve, so I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I agree with him.
So I think. So we can take them, I guess, one at a time. So for the first one, which is the thirty-two Palma Gasset Road, um, I think the recommendation of staffs and staff, and it sounds like the consensus of the board is to not, not abate this. Do you want an official emotion for the non-abatements?
I would, yes, please, yeah.
Um, to not abate the thirty-two Palma Gasset, I think is the, the, the conversation, right?
Good, I make a motion to not abate thirty-two Palma Gasset Road. Um, is that it or?
Yeah, the twenty twenty-four stormwater fee.
For the, uh, twenty twenty-four stormwater fee of forty dollars.
Motion is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, any conversation for this one? Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's in it.
Laidman, I.
Galvin, I.
Laidman, I. Um, then the fifty-seven C Maple Ave Rear, which is the sale of the property, um, asking for a partial abatement. Um, like I said, I am leaning more towards, from a kind of policy perspective, just whoever is the owner at the time of the, the bills going out is the one that's responsible for submitting that fee and however that's collected, whether there's sales or not is, um, uh.
Not sold.
So I would almost say not to abate, but like I said, conversation, I, I understand the stickiness of this one.
Yeah, I, I waffle on it, but without having something specific in place as to how are we going to get the other half? Are we going to bill that, like, what's the, what's the paperwork cost of going to be for that?
It's wrong, we're chasing a guy.
I don't necessarily disagree with, with your statement that it should just be who the owner of the property is on the date the bill is issued.
Paul, Harry, what are your, what's your sense on the needs that are?
You know, Chair, uh, this is a brand new item, uh, which I think kind of doesn't fall under any rule at this point. Going forward, we should be able to have a rule that says, yes, apply for it on your real estate when you transfer property.
Yeah.
You know, get the money back that way. But on this one here, I'd have to say, I would say, yeah, let's approve it because this is kind of new. We haven't had anything in place to really look at this before, we just got to, you know.
So you would be more of the mindset of approve this abatement, but not have it precedent setting, just as kind of a?
No, correct, correct.
Okay.
As long as that's noted and.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think, um, the, the case could be made in this situation that at the time the sale happened, they didn't know that this bill existed. So they didn't have an opportunity to kind of deal with it in the way that they would other property-related items.
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm amenable to.
Yeah, I don't care either way, whatever the board wants to do.
Yeah, I agree with Harry's suggestion.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, I'll work with the treasure collector's office to figure out how to properly bill the remaining portion to the current owner. I'm sure there, we, we can figure something out.
So that motion would be to approve, um, the partial abatement as presented, but note that it's not precedent set, setting and just because this is a, a brand new.
Go ahead, Harry. What's that?
Make your motion.
Oh, I'm speechless tonight.
You can just say so moved.
So, um, yeah, I make a motion that we offer the abatement requested at fifty-seven C Maple Ave Rear on the stormwater charge.
And for it not to be precedent setting?
And not to make a precedent of this.
Second?
Motion and a second?
Thank you, Harry. Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's in it.
Laidman, I.
Galvin, I.
Laidman, I. Thank you. And I think we can do the last two together, um, as these are undeveloped parcels and it's the recommendation of staff to abate these fully since they're undeveloped parcels. Um, and one is, um. Yeah, so these are, one is at Three Susie Drive and I imagine the other one is near to that, but I don't know for sure based on handwriting.
Yeah, I think they're both at Three Susie Drive, but they're different parcel IDs.
Okay, yeah, so I would entertain a motion to abate the, um, last two as undeveloped parcels.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Conversation, roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's in it.
Laidman, I.
Galvin, I.
Laidman, I. Um, and Tamika, just to confirm, you did say that those, or, um, Austin and Tamika, that those parcels have been updated in the assessor's list as undeveloped, so it should be corrected going forward. And just to the public, if anybody else has concerns or questions or anything, reach out. It's obviously, the system is not wholly perfect, so, um, as our first time through, we rely on you also. Uh, moving into ambulance share, uh, Hardwick ambulance sharing, um, we have the request to consider an IMA for shared ambulance with the town of Hardwick. I believe Chief Nipe is here?
Correct.
For this?
Yep. Just that kind of one, plenty of one.
I know, that was perfect timing.
Um, basically what's before you this evening is, um, back over the winter, um, the town, uh, well, let's see, Northbrook Field, no, Westbrook Field Ambulance Association, which is a nonprofit third service town service, um, got into an accident with their ambulance while transporting a patient. Basically, it was during a bad storm, a tree came down and crushed the ambulance while they were driving. Their ambulance was taken out of service. Their ambulance, um, this, this group services not only Westbrook Field, but also the town of Hardwick. So they, basically, they have similar agreement like we have with O-CAM as they provide service. Problem is, is with stripping this one ambulance out of service, they're down to one ambulance for both towns. And it's put them in a pickle that we're actually, through mutual aid, through, between us and Barry, it, are, are being shuffled around. And they've approached us if they could borrow our third ambulance for, for thirty days until they can get their, theirs back online. The reason why this is in front of you, if this was a normal municipal department, under mutual aid, we can share equipment. Because this is a nonprofit and we had to do it through a, get to an IMA with a nonprofit, we're doing the IMA through the town of Hardwick. Is listed as the, the holder of the IMA. What's before you tonight is for us to enter into this IMA agreement that their contractor will be allowed to use our ambulance. Um, they will provide an insurance binder that will cover anything, any damage or repairs necessary to that ambulance. And they're going to pay us seventy-five dollars a day to the town of Rutland to utilize this. We've stripped all the equipment off of it, they're providing all their equipment on it, they just need the vehicle, uh, for a short period of time. Um, so we've done this in the past, uh, we've actually received other ambulances in Rutland for years as ours, we were down. Um, we've shared our ambulance with Barry and Holden on several occasions. But again, this was a unique situation because of a, um, third-party nonprofit, so that's why that's before you this evening. And it's been reviewed by KP Law as well.
You wrote this?
I wrote the original draft, sent it to Hardwick, Hardwick sent it to KP Law at their, their expense, um, and, uh, cleans it up and so.
You're a smart guy on contracts.
Very well.
I read this four times and I couldn't find anything. Nice job. Is there anything that's in here now that you wish was in there?
No, no, I, I think it's a very well-executed contract. I would just hope that, um, for time, th- this came before us three weeks ago. And in order to get this drafted and get it in front of the board because of the delay of the meeting, I would ask that you approve it this evening and any future agreements that you allow the town administrator to sign in the future.
Okay.
And that would include any sort of extension or anything if they needed to, to go.
Yep, yep. Yep.
And you said that the ambulance, if I may, the ambulance, um, has all the equipment, everything stripped out, it's essentially an, an.
It'll be just a vehicle.
And it's an extra ambulance, it doesn't put us for.
That doesn't put us, and there's a clause in there, if one of ours goes down, we can immediately take it back, so, yep.
Uh, who signs for Rutland? I, I don't see a signature, that's why.
Should be the last page.
There, there was one in the file, so the chair would sign it, but the board would take the motion.
Oh, sorry, you didn't sign?
No, it's in your folder to sign, right?
Okay, all right.
Through the chair.
Nice job.
All right, so I'll, I'll be the mean guy for a second. Why should I care as a citizen of Rutland, you know, as far as, you know, we're a town that's always scraping by trying to get equipment? How much wear and tear is this going to put on the ambulance and, uh, cause seventy-five dollars a day is.
It, it is, it's nothing.
It's just a currency.
Yeah, it is, yep. Um, I, I would say this is just under mutual, you know, cooperation with other communities that, you know, we, we've, we've shared resources in the past. Um, we've been on the receiving end of loan vehicles in the past. Police Department had the sheriff's, uh, K nine vehicle for, uh, over two months. Well, you know, so we've been on the receiving end and sometimes it's good for a community to be able to, in a, the right circumstance, be able to provide that back.
Fair enough. I just, yep. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, any other questions or conversation? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the IMA for the ambulance loan agreement between the town of Hardwick and Rutland, authorizing the chair to sign and the town administrator to, um, continue to sign any future agreements relating, related to this IMAs as needed, with updates to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, concerns, conversation about the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's in it.
Laidman, I.
Galvin, I.
Laidman, I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the CPA, uh, the Community Preservation Act ballot question. Um, I believe we have the language for the ballot question, um, for, which goes to the ballot in the November presidential election. This was reviewed by town council, um, is that correct?
It was drafted.
Yeah, it was prepared by town council. Uh, just so the board is aware, next steps, what this looks like, um, to ensure inclusion on the November fifth, sixth, I think it's fifth. Um, general election ballot, uh, this must be submitted first to the local, um, board of registrars, uh, sixty-seven days prior to the election, so that's Friday, August thirtieth, uh, with notification to the Secretary of State's office, uh, by the following Friday, September sixth, uh, to make sure that this is included, um, on the November fifth ballot. So this is, we asked the town council to prepare this, you can see that there's, um, it's informational in nature, as is the political question now to be included on the ballot. So information, um, about, you know, essentially what the ballot question is with no indication for or against.
So the ballot question itself is, shall the town of Rutland accept sections three to seven inclusive of chapter forty-four B of the general laws as approved by its legislative body? A summary of which appears below. And then the summary, um, is a recap of the Community Preservation Act, the three percent, um, beginning in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Um, and that the following exemptions from the surcharge, property owned and occupied as a nomisile by a person who is qualified for low-income housing or low or moderate income senior housing in the town of Rutland as defined in section two of said act, and one hundred thousand dollars of the value of each taxable parcel of residential property. Um, a taxpayer receiving irregular property tax abatement or exemption will also receive a prorated deduction, reduction in surcharge. Um, and then it continues a little bit more about the, the pieces of the Community Preservation Act, um, including, uh, setting up the Community Preservation Committee locally. So this, by approving it tonight, gives us plenty of time to, to provide it to the town clerk for the distribution to the, um, registrars and then ensure that we're meeting all of the timelines set forth by the state. Does anybody have any concerns about the, the language? I think the question itself is pretty straightforward, this is all kind of dictated by MGL and just plugging in pieces of the percent and the exemptions and everything that, that town voted at, um, town meeting.
The only issue I have, if I may, Chair.
Sure.
The only issue I have is that the last line on the second paragraph, only communities that adopt the act receive a distribution from the state trust fund. When I read that at the end, it would appear to me that if I don't adopt a three percent, I won't get any money from the state trust fund.
It says, adopt the act.
What's that?
It says, adopt the act, not a percentage.
In Rutland, the funding source for these community preservation purposes will be a surcharge of three percent on the annual tax levy on real property beginning in fiscal year twenty twenty-six and by annual distributions made by the trust fund created by the act. So it says, I'm going for three percent. If I don't do three percent, I may not get any money from the state distribution fund.
No, the last, the last sentence says, communities that adopt the act. So anybody else that is not adopting the Community Preservation Act cannot receive a distribution from this state fund.
I understand, I don't think you're hearing me, Jen.
But you're saying that, and if we don't adopt three percent, if it would be less.
No, no, I'm saying, you're putting it on a ballot question that somebody is going to read.
Yeah.
And they're reading that we have, we are adopting three percent.
We are, that's what we voted on at town meeting.
I know that, I know that, I know that, relax, I'm not trying to destroy this thing. I'm only concerned about the last statement that says, if I read this, I have to adopt three percent in order to get state money.
No, you just have to adopt the act.
Just the act.
In general, you have to adopt the act in general, so the act, that's why they're.
Then we should, Jen, please separate that out from the rest of this.
It is, it's its own sentence.
Uh, no, make it a separate sentence all by itself.
Wait, so, I mean, here, we could put it as the last sentence in the first paragraph, but that wouldn't make sense because it doesn't talk about the trust fund and the distribution. So the reason why it was placed there, again, this was prepared by town council, so.
I understand that.
We can ask them, but it talks about creation, the, the act altogether, what it does, where the funds come from, then talks about a trust fund created by the legislation. And then to be able to receive funds from said trust fund, you have to adopt the legislation that created it.
But we don't have to adopt three percent if they vote no, we can go back and do something.
But again, this has nothing to do with three percent, this sentence sits on its own. Only communities that adopt the act, one, two, three.
Alright, that's the way you're looking at it, that's not the way.
I think that's the way our town council.
Well, they're not infallible either when it comes to the three percent and getting the trust fund money.
But I think.
There's different issues here, that's all I'm saying.
Again, I, I.
It doesn't matter what percentage is listed.
I think that your interpretation is a little off on this one because it sits on its own talking about the trust fund which was created by the act. The reason why we don't receive money now is because we haven't adopted the act.
And we're saying three percent because that's what was approved by the legislative body at town meeting. So we, we don't have, there's no more discussion on the percentage. That was the discussion of the percentage and the exemptions happened at town meeting. That's where those, that's why it says three percent. It could, if town meeting had approved one percent, then that would say one percent and it, that same sentence would still say, only communities that have adopted the act, meaning the Community Preservation Act, sections three to seven of chapter forty-four B of Ma, of the general laws of Massachusetts, are eligible to receive state, money from the, the state trust fund that was established for the CPA. Um, so the percentage was, and exemptions were already set at town meeting. And if we don't, if the town votes no, then we don't get any matching, we don't get any state funds for, from the CPA, right?
That's not what I'm saying.
What would be your, what would be your proposed revision?
I apologize if you're not hearing what I'm saying.
What would be your proposed revision, to make it more clear?
What would be my proposed revision?
To make it more clear, so you could understand it.
For the people, to me, to understand, it would say, only communities that adopt the act receive a distribution from this state fund irrespective of the three percent, percent, of the three percent. So if we adopt one percent, we're still gonna get funds. If we adopt two, we're gonna get funds. We don't have to make it three to get funds. That is what I am reading here that confuses me from a, somebody that's gonna be looking at this. Now, maybe they're already predisposed to a, a, a decision, you know?
But that, I don't think they're voting on the one, two, or three for this, they're voting to adopt the act or not, it's town meeting that decides.
I know that, I know that.
So I don't think they're gonna vote yes or no depending on one, two, or three, I think.
No, they're gonna vote yes or no on the whole thing. But, boy, okay. I guess we're on two different planets here, I'm looking at it from a community perspective that I don't want them thinking, if they vote, if they don't vote this in it, because we're getting three percent, we're gonna get state money. We're gonna get state money if we pass it regardless of the three percent. That's the point that, we had what, a hundred and twenty people there at the, at the meeting, a hundred and thirty? Only a hundred and thirty understood the three percent, we got six thousand people in town. When they read this, I just wanna make sure they understand that they're, they are voting on the act, period. But it's not the three percent that makes the money come to us, it's the one to three percent. But, I mean, hey, you leave it the way you want, I'm, I'm just concerned that it's, we're telling them something that isn't necessarily, it's a gray area and I think they need to see black and white, and that's all I'm gonna say.
I, I think that this is, uh, to, to me, it's, the town, the legislative body voted on the three percent and they voted on accepting the act and within the act, we had the opportunity to set our percentage. The legislative body agreed on three percent. We also had, within the act, had the opportunity to set our exemptions, which the legislative body agreed to the set exemptions here. If, this is what, what the community, the legislative body voted on. So if we approve this, then we are eligible for state funds. It, it, like I said, if, if the legislative body had approved a different percent, that percent would be in there and it would, we would still be eligible for state funds through the, through the CPA trust fund. But this is what the legislative body presented, that's the information approved, what the legislative body approved, that's the information we're giving to the voters to decide upon, it's not a pick and choose percent or whatever. Um, and it's just saying that by adopting the act as a whole, which these are all pieces of the act, then the communities are eligible for distribution from the state CPA trust fund.
Yeah, in fact, I was just gonna add, um, there's still gonna be a big education piece between now and November as well. There'll be more public information sessions, we still have all the information available, um, on the website for folks. So we're gonna continue to advertise and educate in the meantime so that people fully understand it before they get to the ballot and read the question. And hopefully, more people will participate because we have a much greater length of time between now and the election than we did when we started and had town meeting, if that helps as well.
I make a motion to approve, um, the language for the ballot question in regards to the Community Preservation Act uh, for the November two thousand twenty-four election.
We have a motion for the, um, language, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, is there additional conversation? Hearing none, roll call, Harry.
Nay.
Matt's an eye.
My dry.
Calvin I.
Waitman I. Um, we have the FinCom Finance Committee member ratification, um, at the annual town meeting. The moderator, uh, appointed, I believe there were three, three-year terms. Um, and the moder, moderator, uh, re, I think these are all three reappointments, Lynn Winica, Thomas Rochala, and Alexander Mallett, uh, each for three-year terms. Um, as I think historically, the select board, uh, ratifies the moderator's appointments. Um, so is there a motion to ratify Lynn, Tom, Thomas, and Alexander for their three-year terms? So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, conversation.
Do we have all the information, uh, from the moderator as to his letterwork saying, I nominate these again?
No, that's never been provided in the past.
We discussed that at a board meeting, that committees were required to do that.
Yeah, but this is a, this is a weird one, as you know, this is a moderator appointment that only requires board ratification. I think obviously the new bylaws that, um, were adopted at the special time meeting modified this process a little bit, but candidly, there's nothing required of the moderator, um, other than just announcing at town meeting that he's reappointed, so.
So we don't really, nothing about these people?
Other than they're existing members of the.
They're existing members.
I think there was conversation at, um, some of our bylaw committee, uh, bylaw review ad hoc, or bylaw review sessions, Harry, about there is no moderator bylaw currently and what that process looks like as far as, um, appointing, uh, FinCom members and everything. Um, so this is.
Kind of a rubber stamp?
I mean, yeah, and this is what has been.
Okay, I have a problem with a rubber stamp, alright. We're off to a flying start.
Well, I just wanna remind, the board, and I'll give, I'll give you a lot of credit, Harry, I think through your leadership on this, proposed revisions to this process, this process will be changed once the bylaws are approved by the Attorney General. So I think the comment that we're off to a good start is temporary. Next year, all things considered, hopefully the bylaws are approved, this process will look very different next year. Um, but unfortunately, this is the process that we have. So I, you know, I think if there's questions about the candidates, I would refer you to the moderator.
I just, what, this is one of those, for me, dicey areas that the moderator is another elected official, similar to planning board or the assessors or the library trustees, um, board of health. So it gets dicey as an elected board stepping on, on another elected board's authorities.
It's not a board, so let's clear that up. It's an elected position, but it's not a board, totally different. I really would like to know why each of these individuals wanted to sit again for the finance committee? What draws them to be part of it? And why would the moderator say yes to these people? But I'm not, I don't have any of that information in front of me when we're asked to ratify these positions. That's all I'm saying.
Again, you can make the argument, you have no authority right now to even ask that question because the appointment is technically of the moderator and ratification is the only thing that's requested. So, so the, the common rubber stamp is accurate because that's what it is and what it has been from the beginning of time. But again, to kudos of this board and town meeting, you changed that process after, uh, the special time meeting.
Through the chair, I agree with you a hundred percent, Harry, we talked about this earlier in the year, but like, you know, town, town ministers have said, there's nothing we can do about it right now, next year, hopefully, the process will be better, it takes time.
So I have.
But I agree with you.
I have a question, all the bylaws that we did that were passed at town meeting are useless right now until they're approved by the state.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, which, you know, there's a certain timeframe that the Attorney General's office has, I think it's ninety days. They can seek a forty-five day extension, um, to be able to review and approve the bylaws. They were submitted, um, I think about a month later after town meeting occurred. Um, so there's still the, I can't remember the, the date at the top of my head when essentially we're supposed to be here back.
But we're getting close.
But we're getting close.
Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, I think after legal review and kind of the extensive debate, we are not expecting any substantive changes, if anything, to the bylaws as adopted.
Okay.
So it looks like we should have, the review from the AG's office should be completed on or before June twenty-third, twenty twenty-four is what it looks like, but I don't.
But again, they can seek an extension and, yeah.
Right, right, right.
And they may just because of the scale of bylaws that were submitted, um, but, you know, or they may agree, they may adopt in part and seek an extension for the remaining, really it's up to them.
And that's.
It's interesting that, and just, sorry, it's just a little side comment, um, we have to go through this whole process of, you know, adopting bylaws, submitting them to the Attorney General, but on other forms of government, they can just adopt it with no oversight by the state. So there's still very much so much scrutiny on city, uh, on town form of government, so.
Yeah, so this says, assuming the package is complete and additional information is not requested in the interim by the office, uh, you may expect our review to be complete on or before June twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
June twenty-third?
That's what the correspondence said, yeah.
But that could be extended, you're saying.
Yep, and that's assuming everything was.
Yeah, we certainly don't wanna, cause these finance commit, you, finance committee is meeting relatively shortly, right?
June twenty-seventh.
Huh?
June twenty-seventh is their next meeting.
June twenty-seventh?
And I think, I mean, I don't know if they'll meet before that or not, if they have any, like, urgent transfers or anything, um, so. So.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Tamika, do we have a motion and a second or?
We do.
Okay, thank you, I thought we did. So we have a motion and a second to ratify, um, the three member Fin, uh, finance committee members. Additional conversation, roll call, Harry.
May I go last, I'm still thinking.
Oh.
I.
My dry.
Calvin I.
Second, I.
Waitman I. Thank you. Um, we have before us, uh, some one-day liquor licenses, um, with the applications, I believe, are, uh, submitted and everything is in place, uh, these are for concerts on the Common, um, and I think one set of July fourth. Um, so we have Dulce, Dulce Vita Catering, um, is looking to do concerts on the Common on July fourth, July nineteenth, and August ninth. Lilac Hedge is looking to do concerts on the Common, um, for June twenty-first to June twenty-ninth. Um, July, I think July third is fourth.
Fourth of July, yep.
July twenty-sixth, August sixteenth, and September sixth, with the fourth of July being the July third. And then Common Ground Cider Works is looking to do concerts on the Common, June fourteenth, July nineteenth, and August ninth. Tamika, I had a couple questions and I, sorry. I don't think we have anyone from Events Committee here because I think that they were the ones that kind of solicited for the co, I'm talking about concerts on the Common, but if I went through things properly, it looks like there's two, two vendors for some concerts, one vendor for other concerts, and some concerts, some of the bigger concerts actually don't have any vendor. Do you have any, I haven't, I haven't read the minutes from the Events Committee, um, sorry.
No, I do not have any insight as to why certain vendors were chosen for certain dates, um, and how things were scheduled. They had reached out to me, um, to ask if any of the vendors had applied for one-day liquor licenses, at the time, they had not. Um, so I let them know the timing of, of the select board meetings before these concerts and then shortly thereafter, I started receiving applications from the vendors. The, I think there was one we did a meeting or two ago and then these are the only other three that I've received. Um, but I guess, I did notice that there were duplicates of some, on some evenings, and then there are others not on other evenings.
Yeah, and I guess my other kind of question is, I, and I'm all about sharing the wealth, but one of the vendors is not a town vendor and if we have, um, I wasn't sure, it didn't seem like, um, Dulce Vita and/or Lilac Hedge were totally opposed to doing more dates and so I wasn't sure why, um, the Events Committee was looking to work with, uh, an, an, like an entity outside of town when we have town-based entities that are, um, interested in, in doing it.
It's a very valid question, um, and I will say they are meeting again on June third, next Monday, um, and I'm happy to, to say that this was a question of the board that, that they would like to discuss and would like a little bit more clarification on.
I'll try to go also, I mean, I don't wanna hold up these approvals, but I also worry, I think it, um, I think that the duplicates are Dulce Vita and, um, Common Ground Cider Works. And I, I worry that they aren't aware that they're duplicated and that what that does. Because I think in the past, I mean, we've had. and that what that does, because I think in the past, I mean, we've had, historically, we've had one vendor for the Concerts on the Common, and it's been plenty sufficient. Um and because these are one-days not coming in under any sort of um nonprofit or anything, they're, it's beer and malt, beer and wine only. Um so um I guess maybe the Common Ground Cider would be cider and Dolce Vita would be beer or wine, maybe, I'm not sure.
Yeah. There's been a sentiment of less participation, I suppose, from our office in the things that the committee is doing. Um so I'm making an effort to not step on anybody's toes in the things that they're doing. Um so I have tried to just fulfill my part of the responsibilities. Um I've observed similar things, but did not feel that it was my place to question those things, if that makes sense.
Um I mean, I don't, I, the applications are complete, they are all TIPS certified, they all have the liability, the liquor liability insurance, that's a town and everything, so.
Yep.
All of our kind of ongoing outstanding concerns, I believe, are, are, are addressed by these vendors.
Yes.
Um I'm comfortable with this, and if the board is also, but also I will try to go to the meeting on Monday cause I have some questions that I should have kind of brought up, and just with the holiday and everything, I, I didn't, um. So I apologize on that part, but.
And I did wanna note, um so for Lilac Hedge, you'll find tonight when you sign, there's a separate license just for the July third date because that, they are selling all alcoholic beverages because they are partnering with the Fire Brigade, which is a nonprofit organization, which is allowed under the state to serve all alcoholic beverages, and they are donating a portion of their sales to the Fire Brigade. So that's why I've done a separate license to, to denote the difference, whereas the Concerts on the Common, they'll be operating just as Lilac Hedge and will only be allowed to serve wine and malt beverages.
Didn't that come up last year?
Yes.
Yeah, I think.
How can they fly under the nonprofit flag when they're making a lot of profit?
So they're still paying the fee though?
So as, correct, so they did still pay the fee. Um as of right now, we currently do have, I, I have a drafted uh one-day liquor license application um that has a lot, uh yes, application slash policy um that has a lot more specifics that address concerns that have been brought up by the board in the past. However, obviously, it's not been adopted at this time. Um but there are definitely some things for the board to take into consideration when reviewing that um as to what you are comfortable allowing and not allowing, because at the end of the day, although the state may allow something, it's up to the local licensing authority to decide if you're comfortable with, with doing that, and that includes the sale of all alcoholic beverages, whether they're a nonprofit organization or not. You don't have to allow it.
Can you, Tamika, I don't know if you have access to this, maybe I'm asking something a little about your pay grade. But can you access Mass General Law regarding alcoholic beverages and how nonprofits are to treat that? Cause my understanding is if you're a nonprofit, you're allowed to buy and sell alcohol, but only to your members, not to the outside. So if you could reference that for me?
Yep, so um in Mass General Law, chapter one thirty-eight has to do with liquor licensing.
Wow.
However, there is very little guidance when it comes to one-day liquor licenses. It's mostly at the discretion of the local licensing authority. I will say, the only stipulation with nonprofit, they're the only ones that are allowed to sell hard al- all alcohol, and they have to purchase it from an authorized source, which is available on the state's website, which is through the state. So in other words, you can't just go to the package store down the street and purchase it. It can, either has to be donated or purchased from an authorized source. There is no restriction that it can only be, that it is only sold to members. You can sell it to the general public.
Okay, um. So do they, did the Fire Brigade pay the sixty bucks, or cause they're a nonprofit, they don't pay?
So normally a nonprofit in the past has requested to have the fee waived, and the majority of the time, the board has waived that. Ryan at Lilac Hedge did not request that. In fact, he was happy to pay the fee, so he paid the full sixty dollars for each event. We collected three hundred and sixty dollars from them. The Fire Brigade did not complete the application or pay the fee.
Okay. Don't we have a, a liquor, something pending in a bylaw that we've been discussing about even having liquor in government property to begin with?
That's the policy that, that, that I've drafted, um that the board is going to be reviewing, um but we don't have it adopted yet.
Okay.
Yeah, but there's a, there's a lot of information that I pulled from other communities. Um and a lot for the board to take into consideration of what you want to include in that, in that policy moving forward.
I, I don't personally, I don't have a problem with beer and wine and apple cider. I do have a problem with selling hard alcohol, hard liquor, on the town, on the government property.
There are some, there are some communities that, that don't allow that at all. Um at the, under the advisement of our insurance company, they've said that any alcohol being sold on town property, um the person, the company entity must list the town as an additional insured. Um so I've made sure that that's the case. They have to have a minimum coverage of a million dollars under general liability. They have that. They all carry liquor liability insurance, and they are all using TIPS certified servers. Um so we have confirmed all of that information for these three entities.
Okay, tha- thank you.
Yeah.
And this was one of those policies that we were trying to get before the previous board, but in an attempt to not with everything that happened in that last month.
We just ran out of time.
Um we ran out of time in an attempt to not.
Go for you guys. It's just, yeah, we ran out of time.
An attempt to not rush anything.
Yep.
Um through, we, so.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, and the last thing I wanna do is drag this on, believe me, but I, I guess my only question is back to that profit, nonprofit thing.
Yep.
I'm all for the Fiber Brigade, raise them whatever, whatever they can. I think it's great. But it does look a little shady, the way they do it through Lilac, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
They're working through profitable.
Absolutely.
It, it's shady, all the, and, and, again, I, I.
I know this was a concern that was raised last year.
Right.
Um and we left it at the board's discretion, and so that, that is something that I've addressed in the policy to make it more explicit.
If you, if you want, if you wanna sell liquor, cause you're a nonprofit, that's fine. If you wanna buy it from somebody that you're allowed to, that's fine. But to make an agreement with them that you're going to buy it and then have them sell it so that they can give the profits to you doesn't seem to be in the intent of what this decision of that law was for.
I mean, I.
That's my concern.
No, and, and I hear that, and I, my only kind of, and I, I don't wanna say pushback, but my only consideration is that um partnering with an established entity takes the insurance expense off of the nonprofit as well as ensuring the TIPS certified um bartenders uh piece as well. That these are entities that do this for their livelihood, and so they have well-trained um and experienced bartenders and um staff to be able to, so I think on something like the Fourth of July, where there's a lot of people, not only residents, but there's a lot of other outside of Rutland community members um in attendance, I think having um some of the more experienced personnel um is valuable. Um and I believe they're um providing a a percentage of sales back to the Fire Brigade as far as fundraising. I'm not sure if it's a flat dollar rate or um if it's a percentage of sales. Obviously, if there was um the alcohol, the hard alcohol piece, then the percentage of sales would go up. Um and that would then.
But again, I agree with Tom. It kind of flies in the face of Mass General Law of what they're allowed to do. But I guess then some people just figure it's better to ask for forgiveness, Senator's permission.
I think too, um, one of the things that, that you'll see in the draft policy is um determining whether or not the board wants to set a, a limit of how many drinks can be served at an event, and you know, monitoring that through, you know, having a bracelet and marking it each time they serve somebody a drink, um so that there can be some sort of um oversight limitation when alcohol, especially hard alcohol, is being served on town property when there's a great deal of people in, in kind of a small space.
Karen, here in Normal, Palmegus Road, I believe Chief Monica was here last year after the Fourth of July, and so there were no incidences with any problems with the alcohol last year on July fourth.
You did say that.
And there was more than just Lilac Hedge, there were several, and there was no, there were no incidents, so.
We were lucky.
If you think that people are only buying hard alcohol, you're sadly mistaken. I see it being brought in all the time.
You're prob- you're probably right, which should be monitored.
Uh my other question is the, um, on the Dolce Vita, they have hours of event from five to ten rather than six to nine, which is the Concert on the Common, is that?
Yes, so I, she put that cause she wasn't certain of the times, but on the license that you're gonna sign, I do have it for six to nine. Yep, I have everybody is six to nine for the concerts, and then for July third, I, I believe I did eleven to nine because I think that's the day of the chicken barbecue, and they have stuff during the day.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so I, like I said, I have questions for the Events Committee. I don't wanna hold up things here on this end. I'm comfortable kind of with everything as presented, um and knowing that we have a policy probably that won't be uh retroactive to these, but I, knowing that the, our local individuals for some of the monitoring piece, I imagine that they would be willing to work with the board um if the policy is adopted. Um so I would entertain a motion. We can do the Concerts on the Common as presented, um first for Dolce Vita um June fourteenth, July nineteenth, and August ninth. Lilac Hedge, Concerts on the Common, June twenty-first, June twenty-ninth, June twenty-sixth, August sixteenth, and September sixth. And Common Ground Cider Works, Concerts on the Common, June fourteenth, July nineteenth, and August ninth, as presented for us. And then we'll do the Fourth of July one after, if that's, just so that they're two different.
I wrote it all down, so I still moved, is okay?
Okay. So I moved. Is there a second for the Concerts on the Common?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the Concerts on the Common. Um is there any conversation? Hearing that, and we'll call Harry.
Sekman aye.
Ben's an aye.
Ledger aye.
Galvin aye.
Waitman aye. And then we have Lilac Hedge for the Fourth of July, which is the July third. Um and that's the, the nonprofit all, um, all alcoholic beverages um for that event. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the July third.
Lilac Hedge.
Lilac Hedge Farm, uh Fourth of July, liquor license, as presented.
Is there a second? I will second for conversation. We've heard, I think, some of the concerns. Uh is there, I mean, what's the board's?
I, I don't disagree with everybody else. Do we want to post, can we postpone that specific one and get the policy review in and?
Yeah, so their first concert isn't until June twenty-first, and we meet again on June ten.
Well, we did all the concerts.
Well, I'm sorry, you're right, July third, yes, yep, we'll have two meetings before the July third, the July thirty.
Will, will the majority of the questions be addressed if we get the policy reviewed?
I, it's also, it's also the discretion, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I was just gonna say, it's also the discretion of the board to say we're comfortable with issuing it for wine and malt, but we're not comfortable with hard alcohol. There's no requirement that just because they're a nonprofit, you have to allow them to serve hard alcohol. That's something that's really at the discretion of the board. Um but I do have the draft policy ready to distribute, um so if the board wants to take that up at their next meeting and then take this up, it's com- it's completely up to you. We do have time.
Well, and I guess my question is, is the board, what's kind of, what's the, the concern from the board? Is it the hard alcohol piece? Is it, um, is it the?
You wanna meet Tom?
No, 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 I, I actually, would it be possible to get somebody from Lilac?
I think Ryan's on.
In here to kind of break it down?
Yep, Ryan's on Zoom.
Ryan, can you hear us?
Yep, I'm on the call.
Can you explain?
Sure, so I can, I can give a little bit of background on this. So we have worked with Fire Brigade since Chili and Chowder Fest. Uh I don't know where the video went. Um so that's kind of when we started, when um they were looking to bring taps in for that. Um the alcohol portion, it was when we were probably on four years or so, we were trying to figure out after Chili and Chowder went away, how to be able to partner with Fire Brigade for them to also be able to make money, so. Um I think one thing to kind of put into cons- context for this, last Fourth of July, so I know one thing that's also gonna be reviewed in um your uh alcohol bylaw type things that are being reviewed um is the insurance portion of it, so um I carry a separate libe- liquor liability insurance. That's different than traditional liability insurance. Um my alcohol, um my alcohol policy, my um insurance agent has said that um a general liability policy does not cover for town events. I'd talked to Austin a little bit about this before, and I was surprised that the town of Rutland actually doesn't require um a separate alcohol policy for it, so to apply for one-days, last year, we did two dates um for the Fourth of July, um but that one policy, which is a separate one-day, doesn't, nothing to do with um my all-alcohol policy up at two sixteen Wachusett Street, was eighteen hundred dollars. So for an individual such as the Fire Brigade to go in and pull a one-day license for two or three days of Rutland Fourth of July, just wouldn't end up making sense. Um so I think that that's kind of how that came into play originally. Uh we've always donated a portion of sales to uh Fire Brigade for this as a fundraiser, so uh we have traditionally in the past been set up behind where the chicken barbecue happens, and it was the intention that that was with us setting up there behind there, and we do ice cream at the same time, but setting up behind there was also helping um draw people what was originally to Chili and Chowder Festival and then to the Chicken Barbecue behind, so. That's a little bit of the background. I mean, I'm happy to answer any other questions that come, come about from it, but I would say another thing to kind of keep in mind is our intention of being up there. While it might seem like you, yes, there's a lot of people interested in drinking alcohol, beer, wine, cider, um taking out that eighteen hundred dollars, there's not much profit. I mean, it's, it's not like it's raking it hand over fist. It's kind of, in Concerts on the Common, our intention up there is being a part of the community. We could stay back at the farm, but it's just kind of letting people know that, hey, you're like Rutland is our town, and we wanna be able to spread the word that we are around, so I can answer any further questions.
Uh Ryan, Harry Sekman here.
Yep.
Um, you have a full liquor license?
Sorry, I'm turning. Uh yes, I do.
So you donate to the Fire Department?
Yes.
So what's the purpose of the Fire Brigade then? Why, why, why are they going through you to buy your alcohol? So you can sell it and then give them a donation from it, cause that's what we're hearing.
For the Fire Brigade.
For the Fire Brigade, yeah.
Here, here, just speak clearly. He, he donated to the Fire Brigade, not.
Right, no, I'm sorry, not the Fire, Fire Brigade, right. So you donate to the Fire Brigade, but the Fire Brigade comes in now and says, we wanna have a one-day liquor license, right? Fire Brigade's asking you for a liquor license?
No, Ryan applied.
Well then, where does the Fire Brigade come in here?
Their association as a nonprofit allows Ryan to sell hard alcohol.
I mean, the application could be under the Fire Brigade as well. I think last year we put it in under the Fire Brigade, but.
Yeah, we have a problem.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, we prefer to have it under Ryan because the Fire Brigade would, as the applicant, would then have to be the insurance holder, and they would have to provide the certified, you know, the TIPS certified bartender, so this is a, is a cleaner process as far as who the license is being issued to.
Right, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to follow Mass General Law in terms of what's allowed and what isn't allowed, and why is the Fire Brigade, if you're gonna donate? And why is the Fire Brigade, if you're gonna donate money to them, it's only because they are able to have the liquor license to buy alcohol so you can sell it, so you can give them the profit? See, that's where I'm confused here. So what's the purpose of the Fire Brigade? To allow you to sell alcohol? That's its only purpose? Am I not reading something properly?
It, it sounds to me like it's, it's just a collaboration that allows Lilac Hedge to take the licensing of everything, but still be able to contribute the donation to the Fire Brigade without them having to foot the bill for the large insurance.
I understand that, then maybe they should pay us another sixty bucks for that, cuz we have two, two entities here, not just one.
So technically speaking, Ryan could apply for a one day liquor license and sell wine and malt at the Fourth of July and there would be no question, there would be no problem.
Okay.
His collaboration with the Fire Brigade is what allows him to sell all alcoholic beverages. In other words, hard alcohol. Ryan paid the sixty dollar fee. We did collect the fee for this license.
He's all liquor licensed, he can sell.
Only on the premises of two sixteen Wachusett Street. As soon as you leave the premises, a retail liquor license is no longer valid, which is why you have to apply for a one day liquor license because Dolce Vita also has a full retail license, but only for twenty four Palm Desert Road.
So if he applies for the one day liquor license, he won't get approved unless the Fire Brigade steps in.
He'll get approved for wine and malt. He will not get approved for hard alcohol.
Fire Brigade steps in and backs him up so he can sell the alcohol. So the Fire Brigade can benefit, but the Fire Brigade doesn't have to pay any fees or costs or insurance or anything.
This could be any, this could be the Historical Society, the Little League, uh, football, you know, any nonprofit.
Well, this is kinda what's going through my mind on the policy.
Yeah.
You know, how do we really, we're getting into gray areas here and we shouldn't be. It should be black and white. When it comes to serving alcohol to the citizens of this town, it should be black and white.
And that is the goal of the new policy. However, we don't have it in place yet. So that's why it's really at the discretion of the board as to, you know, what you're comfortable with for this particular license for July third.
Yeah, I guess from my perspective, I, I mean, yeah, we haven't had the policy in place. I don't know if we're gonna get it approved before that or not, but on this July third, if that's the only day we're gonna do it, my feeling would be I'm okay, but not anymore until the policy is done. We are not gonna grant any nonprofit the ability to sell liquor until the policy is completed. No more. So July third is the only one that's involved in that.
Well, that's if I may, yeah, that's why I suggested if, if we're, if we wanna hold off on, because it's not until July, we could hold off on this one and evaluate the policy first to have something in place and come back to the July third license.
I hear you, Jen, but I'm concerned is what if the policy we do doesn't allow them to sell liquor or alcohol?
Well, but isn't that kinda what we're talking about?
Right, but I, I guess, I never thought I'd say this, but giving Ryan the opportunity to say, I'm trying to plan ahead here. I don't wanna wait a week and a half, two weeks and then find out I can or can't. That's my only goal here for him.
I mean, I think, I, and, and I'm looking at the calendar because we would get the policy ideally at our next meeting. I think it's pretty much ready to go. Um, we didn't include it in this because of the board reorg and everything. Um, but so we would get it at our next meeting, which I believe would be June tenth. That would really only give us kind of two weeks to, to be ready to approve before we would have to approve the policy and then approve the one day. Um, like I said, I think, Ryan, I don't wanna speak for you, but I think both, or Elena, but I think both of you in the past have been willing to work with the town, um, if the town had additional ones. Or I know you and I have spoken personally just about um ways to track beverages um and, and everything. So I don't think that some of the concerns are things that you wouldn't be amenable to, to doing, even though we don't have the policy in place right now.
Yeah, no, I would agree with you. I'd actually, I mean, I, I think it'll be good to have some more clarity and I, the way we're operating, I'm not sold one way or the other. I think it will be helpful for the town to be able to clarify what kind of insurance is needed um, in the past. I mean, I, I've been the one asking in the past of, can, can we have some clarity as to whether cans need to be poured into cups, whether wristbands should be used, how we're identifying checking IDs? So I think this is all good progress. I, I'm not against making these changes and we are, we are definitely amenable to things.
Yeah, thank you, Ryan, for explaining that, cuz you've, I, I was confused about it. I feel like I, I understand what's going on with the insurance part of it and, and uh, the merger between you and the Fire Brigade. It makes, makes a lot more sense to me now, so I appreciate that. But for me, coming on this board, I just want this town to be, I, I, I think I speak for everyone. We're trying to legitimize the process and everything in this board, you know, and uh, that, that's my only concern. But I appreciate you explaining it to me.
So, to get a sense from the board, are you comfortable kind of approving the, the one day for Lilac Hedge for July, the July fourth holiday, the, the third um as presented? Um, for tonight, knowing that we will have an ongoing conversation with Ryan, um, as we look at policy and everything also, um.
I was just gonna add, just for your consideration, I imagine, I can't confirm, we might receive more of these types of applications on behalf of the Fourth of July Committee as we get closer to the event. Um, as far as the draft policy goes, although our next meeting is not till the tenth, I can send it out to you so you have the next two weeks to look at it for your discussion. Um, so I think it would be helpful for me to know, is the board gonna halt? I mean, I, to be honest, I don't know that we're gonna have necessarily another nonprofit situation outside of this, but is the board's intention to halt any nonprofit issuance of one day liquor licenses? So that I know what to tell the Fourth of July Committee if they come to me with somebody else and I can say, the board isn't comfortable approving those right now? I guess I'm just looking for guidance so I don't set anybody up for failure, you know what I mean?
I mean, I think, personally, I think if we're approving, if we're approving one then for this holiday, it would have to be, to me, for this upcoming Fourth of July, the same consideration that, you know, and my guess, and I don't wanna say for sure, but my guess is it would be another in-town entity that's, that would be doing it, having, being amenable to the communication from the board as far as, you know, monitoring number of beverages or whatever. Um, and then kind of stipulating that going forward, similar to how we've been stipulating, like, we need insurance and we need tips, like, that, that going forward, things are, you know, we have the policy in place. But I feel like if we're gonna do something for, for one nonprofit, knowing that the other nonprofit is another town-sponsored nonprofit, the Fourth of July Committee, um, also seems kind of not in, in the best.
Yeah, it's like, it's like the water aba- sewer abatement, you know?
Right.
Yeah, if we do it now, we're not gonna do it anymore.
Right, right.
My thought was yes. And, and I know July third is about a month away. And I don't know how that interacts with Ryan's plans, but if we did approve that, then no other nonprofit that comes to us could work in that type of a scenario.
Right. And I think, right, I, I, I think I understand that from, from your perspective, but I think my concern is that for this Fourth of July holiday, then it's kind of that first in, first, you know what I mean? Where first in, so Ryan and the Fire Brigade are, are benefiting from that. But then, for example, the Fourth of July Committee, which is also another towns, you know, a town entity that relies heavily on donations, is not able to, to receive that same consideration. Um.
Correct.
And so I think for me, for me, that the, the hol- this, this upcoming holiday is, you know, kind of open to the, the historic nonprofits that we've had. In the past, it's been um, the Fire Brigade, the Fourth of July and the three hundredth, the three hundredth is done.
But the Boy Scouts do something, though?
They don't do alcohol. The Boy Scouts and churches don't do, yeah, they do food. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess that would make sense.
Yeah, um, and so it would just kind of be um, for, for those, that essential other entity, um, town entity as a nonprofit consideration.
So are you saying that for this holiday this year, if we approve Lilac Hedge, we would approve any other similar?
In town.
Collaborations between nonprofits and?
Yes, with, yes, yes. And with the same consideration as far as, as the policy develops and making sure that the, the serving entity is amenable to, to any additional guidance that the board would like to see as far as.
Can we, could we, if we have any more of these, could we request participation from both? Just to, again, if their concern is making sure that everybody's on the same page and that they're open to the considerations, especially for this year.
In the meeting itself? Oh, sure, absolutely.
Just, again, just so that everybody's, if we're, again, cuz I don't disagree. If, if we're gonna do this, we can't then turn around and say no to somebody else. So, but if we can get participation from both of the entities that are requesting the license to make sure they're amenable to the considerations until we get the policy and everything.
And I'll reach out um preempti- preemptively to the Fourth of July Committee, just to see what their plans are or if they have it. Cuz it may be that, that it's not even an issue and it, it doesn't come up. Um, but then I'll kind of know what to anticipate and can make sure that we plan things out appropriately for the, the two meetings that the board has in June and everybody's okay to go.
I was gonna mention, I think last year, um, I, I believe we were the only other one that was doing it last year. So, and we, while, although we were working with the Fire Brigade, we also donated our portion of sales to the Fourth of July Committee as well. I don't think anyone has applied in the past, but I also don't disagree with Leah's statement and the fact of keeping it open. I'm not trying to say that we should be the only ones doing it. And then the only other thing that I wanted to mention to Harry's point, talking earlier regarding the fees and of the idea of the Fire Brigade trying to get around the fee. I think one thing to take into consideration with this alcohol stuff as well, um, kinda to some of Leah's points regarding the um Concerts on the Common, um, and out-of-town businesses coming in. I think there should be some thought into whether that fee structure is different from outer town. I mean, I think we should be trying to promote the businesses in our town, the businesses that just paid the additional taxes based on property taxes and evaluations, um, as compared to also bringing in outside entities. Like I mentioned before, the concerts and stuff is not a big moneymaker, but I think to highlight our businesses, there should be a little bit more um focus point on in-town first.
So, Ryan, Harry Sekman, if I may, so you're, are you opposed to having outside businesses come in? Or that if they are, they should be charged a much larger fee?
So, so I, I guess that's a twofold. So I, I had realized earlier today, so I was, I was told last week that we were the last alcohol license that the committee um was wa- that the town was waiting for, um, for the Concerts on the Common. So when I looked today at the board report as to what else, um, I work well with just like writing stuff down, so I did the dates and one, I was surprised that there were certain dates, like petty larceny that had no one up there, cuz I, I had applied for, we said we could do whatever, we could do one, we could do all of them. But I was surprised that there was certain dates that didn't have any. And I, I, realistically, to Leah's point, I don't think that there's necessarily a need for two of them and I think priority should be going to us, Dolce Vita. Um, and kinda when it's realized, I guess, I guess I'm not quite sure how we got to the point of trying to vet outside, outside of town vendors, uh, when last year, I think most of the sentiment that I heard was it couldn't, we had expressed interest last year and I, I was told by the events committee that it couldn't sustain um another vendor. So, I, I think we start in-town first, make it fair for everyone in-town that's participating and maybe it does get to the point where it can support a second person. But I do think either a focus on town and if it is bigger and we don't have the ability in-town to um supply what is needed than going outside. But I, I think you should look into the fee structure being a little bit different when we do have to reach out of town as well.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So.
So let me just, so you answered the question about Rutland first, but you didn't answer my question about the fee if it's not Rutland first.
Yeah, he, I, I think, he did, I think.
It should be more than sixty?
Yes, yep, he just said that.
He did?
He said reevaluate the, yeah.
Oh, I didn't, I was looking for a dollar.
It, it's, it's just a thought of it being more if it's not in-town. I mean, the businesses in-town are paying so more, more in taxes that like if someone is coming from out of town, I, I think it would make sense to have it be maybe a different fee structure.
Okay, I apologize, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Ryan. Um, so we have before us the Fourth of July, the July third uh as presented um for Lilac Hedge, uh.
We have a motion and a second.
We do have a motion and a second, thank you. I, I thought we did.
Long time ago.
We've been having a lot of conversation and so, um, so is there additional conversation? Is the board comfortable with the motion and the second as presented?
This is for six days.
This is for the July third. Uh, we, we did all of the, we already did all of the Concerts on the Common. Um, this is just for the July third, um.
Well, there's six days listed here.
Right, we pulled out, so this would just be the July third. We pulled out these other ones cuz they were Concerts on the Common that were just beer and um malt and wine.
We approved those already, Pop. Those ones were already approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, with a different motion.
So we have a motion to approve the July third um as presented in a second. We'll call Harry.
Sekman, I.
Mattson, I.
Ledger, I.
Galvin, I.
Whitman, I. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, moving on, we have the MWRA Expansion Study, Discussion of Advocacy to Include Rutland in Mass Water Resources Authority Expansion Study, Austin.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, so the board was made aware of this, I think, from a resident. Um, this is a request, um, essentially just for our office to send a notification to Senator Durant and Rep Ferguson to ask for an amendment of legislation that was filed by Representative Saunders from the seventh Hampton District. Um, in summary, this bill establishes a um Community Development Trust Fund for the Quabin, uh, for Quabin Host Communities, of which we essentially are one because forty percent of our land is, is due to the Quabin and we've got a large pipe underneath us. So, um, part of this legislation establishes a trust fund. Um, the funding source for the trust fund um is essentially an excise tax for current um MWRA rate payers of um essentially five per one thousand gallons. Um, of which funds would go in and uh would be used to um support host communities um for transportation needs, some other essentially infrastructure needs. But further, we'll also pay for a study to expand, consider expansion. Um, now again, that would just be a study, um, to consider expansion of MWRA service to the communities within a certain um area. So communities within the Westfield River, Chickapee River, Connecticut River and Miller's River Basin communities, um, of which Rutland is within the Chickapee River Basin. So, um, for some reason, the representative at the time did not include Rutland as like a example. Um, spoke briefly with Rep Ferguson on this, um, it's proposed legislation. In all likelihood, we'll see if it goes anywhere. It doesn't hurt to ask. If Rutland can be included in a study, it costs us nothing. We're not in current MWRA community, so we wouldn't have to pay for it. Boston would, essentially. Um, we'll see where it goes. Um, right now, I think it was extended, the reporting deadline was extended until sometime next month. Um, I believe after that, essentially the legislation dies. So if the board is amenable, um, Rep Ferguson just said I can send her an email tomorrow and say, hey, we'd like to be included, so. If you have any questions?
And we would, if we're approved, we would get a certain dollar value for use in this MWRA?
Yeah, I mean, this, this is again, a very.
Not a lot of money, but.
Probably not a lot, but it's, so essentially five percent of expenditures per year would be um given to communities for operations and management of pipes, things like that, infrastructure. Um, so, you know, whatever our proportionate share of the five percent would be, that would be essentially our allocation. I just wanna, again, this is proposed legislation. I would imagine that this will, if it goes anywhere, will be heavily amended, um, probably from folks who represent MWRA communities. Um, but it doesn't hurt to ask, so for the sake of inquiring if it's possible. Um, what I can say is MWRA, uh, the advisory board has done several studies um on expansion. Um, and most of the time, that comes with a significant dollar value and then the board says, okay, maybe not. My previous community, they did one, it was like a two. Okay, maybe not, my previous community, they did one, it was like a two billion dollar project. Um but again, doesn't hurt to ask.
I mean, I think it makes, from m- my perspective, it makes sense to ask to be included, it sounds like um. In the snippets that we got, said Ludlow, Belchertown, Ware, Hardwick, Berry, Peterson, Phillipston, New Salem, Orange. Wendell, Schutzeberry and Pelham were all included, and so we border a couple of those communities. Um to your point, Austin, where a lot of our land is watershed protection and we. Have the aqueduct going through town, um so any kind of visibility that we have would be greatly beneficial, I think. So I would, do you want a motion to, I think we can have a motion to authorize Austin to. Um move forward with Rep Ferguson and Senator Durant um as far as our interest in being included. In um the MWRA expansion study.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional conversation? We'll call Harry.
Second I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Yeah, I'm an I.
Waitman I.
Let you know when we get our first check.
Or how much it's gonna cost us. Next up, we have Moses Howe Award Ceremony, um I believe this is notification. That uh as the board voted a few months ago, the recipient is uh Kenneth Lowe Junior. After some back and forth with the family and the Events Committee, uh the ceremony is scheduled for the second concert on the common, which is Friday, June twenty first. Um we will do the ceremony at five thirty prior to the six o'clock start of the concert. So five thirty here on Town Common um in the gazebo um with a little presentation, so if the board can be there. Um for the presentation and everything to be good, is that, is there anything additional?
Uh no, I suppose Tim, Mrs. Lowe last week, um to confirm the date, she and the family are very excited to come that evening. Um I've reached out to the Woo Socks to see if maybe Smiley could make an appearance, because he was um a very, Mr. Lowe was a very well loved usher for the Woo Socks. Um so my buddy George is working on that, so we're gonna see if we can make that happen, um. And yeah, I think it's gonna be great, we sent out, I sent out a formal invitation last week to the family, uh we shared it on social media and the website today. Um so, you know, all are welcome to come and then stick around for the concert and food truck vendors, and it should be a really nice night for everybody.
Thank you, and I know you've done some promotion already on the social media sites and just kind of as the date gets closer.
Yes, yep, absolutely, we'll keep, we'll keep it out there for people so they don't forget, thank you.
Um next up, we have uh some fiscal year twenty twenty four interdepartmental transfer requests. Uh review and prove fiscal year end um year end transfer requests, so I think we have.
Three as of today. That's right. And that paper is included in your package.
I saw the email, I just, um so um one is to transfer six thousand three hundred thirty seven dollars. Um from our healthcare account to our Medicare account. Um because there was a hmm the Medicare tax budget line item. Um. Is, there is a deficit, and this is what um Steve, our treasurer collector. Estimates will be needed to cover the remainder of the fiscal year. Um.
Make a motion to transfer sixteen thousand dollars, three hundred and, oh, excuse me, sixteen thousand three hundred and thirty seven dollars. Uh from account zero one zero dash nine one four dash five one zero zero dash zero zero. Dash zero 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 zero, health insurance will be transferred into account. Zero one zero nine one six, five one zero zero. Dash zero zero dash zero 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 Medicare. Uh please see attached, so that's for the, what do I say, the health insurance budget line?
Medicare.
Medicare tax budget.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second conversation.
Just a, just a note, um so I think when uh previous treasurer collector was preparing this budget for FY twenty four. Um obviously, some of the um the calculations uh based upon salary, I think it's one point four five percent. Um salaries were very different when things were being prepared at the time, so the FY twenty five budget that was approved. Substantially increases this budget line item to just under a hundred thousand. So we're not expecting a deficit, but we don't know.
It's Medicare.
He give you all a raise and. And we're in trouble. Do you have questions?
Yeah, I have a lot of questions. Uh, cause this happens every single year, I, we haven't had a year yet, and I don't understand how. That to me is kind of, sorry to say, common sense. You know you're gonna give raises, you know when you're gonna give the raises, and it's retroactive to the same time all the time, I don't understand why. It's a very easy calculation, I have to do it for.
Yeah.
Mine plus FICA, and eh you know, I'm off maybe fifty, sixty bucks every year.
Yeah, so they, um now, again, this was. Prior to me, but I think they, they assumed a five percent increase in this. But I think what also changed since then is you had, you know, you had essentially two town administrators with varying salaries. Yeah, um so you had, yeah, you had turnover there, so some of the the payroll taxes that go through there, I think were. Unanticipated, um especially.
Staff was all budgeted, in theory, it should have all been budgeted, cause you knew you were gonna hire the HR person. We knew we were gonna, you know, so yes, there should be some overlap with you and and the previous town administrator, but seriously, how much? I mean.
Yeah, so this was prepared, uh I think prior to FY twenty five, budgets were prepared by the Treasurer Collector's Office as. Uh that office maintained benefits, so um we've already determined these amounts. Uh but of course, again, things change, right, health insurance is, or overall insurance is a tough one. Um now, we know based off of uh what the projected payroll is for next year, we know, and that's why we substantially increased it to ninety nine thousand. Um but, you know, I guess that's also the nature of why we have urine transfers for things like this that happen. So, you know, we also, um you know, right now, I think we're gonna have about a forty thousand dollar surplus in health insurance. You can make the argument that, is that too much? I don't know, right? It's really hard.
The health insurance is a much harder one to to nail down, Medicare is a pretty state straightforward.
It also depends on employee count, right? If you've got, if you've got a substantial amount of vacancies, you're gonna have a significant surplus there, right, cause you're not paying payroll taxes on it, so. I think this is a really challenging.
We have yet to have that, have that case yet. If you go back and look, we've, we've always had to pay in more for Medicare. So.
Yeah, so this was something that we and um the Chair of Select Board, Chair of FinCom, were notified in October. Um that this was going to be an issue, the projected deficit uh was eleven thousand dollars. Now, obviously, with some, some new people that came on board, the deficit will be about fifteen, hence why we're asking for sixteen.
We have a motion and a second.
Do you have more questions?
I'll have a lot more.
It'd be helpful now.
On the twenty seventh, don't worry, I'll, I'll come full bore on the twenty seventh.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any conversation, we'll call Harry.
Second I.
Matt's an I.
Waitman I. Um we have another request for two thousand two hundred six dollars and eighty nine cents. Um for uh from Select Board Other Charges to Town Phones. Um because the budget amount, the previous budget amount did not adequately cover for the entirety of the fiscal year. Um this pays the remainder of the fiscal year twenty four bills.
Make a motion to approve two thousand two hundred and six dollars and eighty nine cents. Transferred from account zero one zero dash one two two dash five seven zero zero. Dash zero zero dash zero 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 zero, the Select Board Other Charges. To be transferred to Town Phones at zero one zero dash one five six. Dash five two zero zero dash zero zero dash zero 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 zero. Uh the amount budgeted in FY two thousand twenty four for Town Phones was not adequate uh for the entirety of the fiscal year. This account pays for bills issued by Verizon, AT and T, AT and T um mobility and Crocker Communications. The amount requested will cover the remaining bills for FY two thousand twenty four as outlined on the attached table. This will also account for the deficit of one hundred sixty eight dollars and ninety one cents.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second conversation.
Austin, this will, this will zero out the account. Okay.
Yeah, and I think the answer for some of this, I mean, um I think we added a couple phones for staff. Um we added also some lines, um you know, for the conservation agent position when it was established, so that. You know, also modified our cost based off of staffing and um, you know, folks that needed to have their phone replaced, things like that.
I mean, this, this was prepared five thirteen, we still had one month to go. So what we're doing here is twenty two, that's one sixty eight, which includes, will zero out the account for the year.
So if I may, Harry, I, so I attached the table and I showed all of the bills that are going to be due for the rest of this fiscal year.
Okay.
As well as I figured out which accounts are paid in arrears and which are paid in advance, so we'll have one bill in July. That'll cover the June coverages, so this should pay for the remainder of FY twenty four, plus account for that deficit of one sixty eight. I was able to pay the, this warrants bills with what was left in the account. Um after paying these bills, it left a deficit of the one sixty eight, which Donna, the account, was aware of, and we worked out this plan together. Um there was also some phone lines that were still with another company. I can't remember the name off the top of my head, that were transferred back to the Verizon lines. It's not Crocker, no, um that were transferred back to the Verizon lines, which resulted in an increase in the Verizon bill from what we had been paying, so. We hadn't anticipated that when we created the FY twenty four budget, so that's why there was that discrepancy in the amount.
So come June thirtieth, everything paid will, this account will be zero. Okay.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
A little into July, but yeah, okay, yep.
The motion and a second, we'll call Harry.
Second I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Yeah, I'm an I.
Waitman I. Um and the final request is for two thousand five hundred dollars from health insurance uh into Medicare. Um again.
Postage.
Postage, oh, then.
Thank you. Started differently, so we did, we just did Medicare, right?
I, we did do Medicare, but I think the account number is correct, it's just the account name still says Medicare and it should say postage, I think. On the sheet that we have.
Oh, yeah.
For health insurance, then postage?
And I, but I think the account is correct, I think the account number is correct.
I can give you the right account number or.
I just wanna make sure that.
It's, the account number's correct.
Okay, yeah, so this would just be postage then.
Life insurance?
Health insurance to postage.
Yeah, these are.
Make a motion to approve the transfer of twenty five hundred dollars, so two thousand five hundred dollars from account. Zero one zero dash nine one four dash five one zero zero dash zero zero. Dash zero 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 zero, health insurance to account zero one zero. Dash one five nine dash five four zero zero dash zero zero dash zero 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 zero, postage.
And we have a motion, is there a second?
Second motion.
And this is just estimated postage costs um through the end of the fiscal year. Um and I think Steve had said that um. There was a increase in recent excise tax bills, um and. Various other mailings that had gone out, so that's why we need the transfers though.
Yeah, one of the most significant unanticipated mailings was for the special election for um former Senator Angobi's seat. Um those obviously expenses weren't anticipated and um. Things that were mailed out were taken out of this budget, that obviously didn't accommodate for that when um FY twenty four planning, budget planning had taken place. And we need to mail things, as always, so the fact that um we have such a very low postage budget in general is not healthy for the organization.
I have a question. Yeah, postage rates increased, um I have a question, for the special election for Senator Goby's seat, um. Do we get any state reimbursement from that? I thought we were supposed to get something, but I, I think it's gonna be so delayed, but maybe I, I was mistaken.
To be honest, I, I think the reimbursement of them, and don't quote me on this, like, row, I guess I'm on TV. Um I think, I wanna say we get um maybe some for supplies, but mostly, I think wages.
Okay.
But I, I'd have to check with you on that.
No, that's fine, I think I had asked immediately.
But certainly doesn't cover the costs.
Right, and she said it was minimal for what the expenses were that went along with it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, let me just understand, in my primitive brain here, we spent money mailing postages on. An election, which now we're taking out of the health insurance account and transferring it to Medicare?
No, we're taking, so there's surplus in the health insurance line item, there'll be about a forty thousand dollar surplus. We're taking from that line item and transferring twenty five hundred to the postage line item.
The form accidentally says Medicare, it should say postage.
Ah.
The account number is correct, it's just, yeah, I thought the same thing, Harry.
Um is the new stormwater bill gonna increase this line item?
Uh, yeah, so we accommodated for mailings in uh the stormwater budget for FY twenty five.
Okay, so that.
Yeah, but that did add to this as well.
Okay, so what's the, what's the new budget for twenty five that was?
There's not a separate postage, it's in purchase services for.
For storm water?
Yeah.
No, for, for this line item for.
Oh, it's um twenty two thousand four hundred. So two thou- roughly two thousand dollar nineteen sixty increase.
So closer to where we end. Okay, so we have a motion.
You know, eh, to be honest, it probably won't be enough, a twenty two thousand dollar budget for a thirty million dollar organization is not sufficient.
For postage?
Yeah. So I wouldn't be surprised if we're back here same time next year, probably like every year.
See, that one doesn't bother me, because you can't predict that, Medicare, you can't.
Well, again, I've.
And I will beat that drum on the twenty seven.
Yeah, yeah. Um really, to be honest, this should be like thirty, forty, maybe fifty thousand, because, you know, to be honest. It's one of those weird machines where we, we essentially put money into it and then we get the bill, so I mean, this could have been a twenty thousand dollar request. But we're gonna use it, you know, so.
So we do have.
It doesn't expire after June thirty on the postage machine.
So we have the machines that gives us the nonprofit rate for postage?
Uh no, we have like, well, actually, no, I think we got rid of our bulk permit, but we're just paying regular postage like everyone else.
Bulk per- permit was too expensive?
It was, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
For the amount that we mail, I mean, considering.
But by having a postage meter, you do save something, it's not like a bulk permit, but you do save something, I. Forget if it's two cents or a cent, I forget, but if you save.
It's a really cool machine, if you're interested, you can come take a look at it.
That's above my pay grade.
Yeah, yeah.
So we have a motion and a second, we'll call Harry.
Second I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Yeah, I'm an I.
Waitman I, um we have upcoming meetings, uh we're back to our regular scheduled Monday meetings, Monday, June tenth. Uh Monday, June twenty fourth and Monday, July eighth, that's after the Fourth of July holiday. Um and keep an eye on social media and everything, concerts in the common start, I believe, June fourteenth, so we'll have one meeting before that. Um and as we talked about, the Moses Howe Award on June twenty first.
I, so I sent an email to the board last week, I think, um we were notified by. Um Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, Rutland will be receiving a community planning award. Um if you are interested in attending the annual meeting at Wachusett Mountain on June thirteenth. I know I said, like, last Friday or two Fridays ago, to let me know if you could, let me know as soon as possible if you're interested in attending, they're holding two tables for us. Um so uh we've invited the Select Board Planning Board and some staff members, if they're interested in attending.
When is this again? I, I know you sent me the email.
Yep, Thursday, June thirteenth at five P M, if you wanna go on the skylift. Yep, Thursday, June thirteenth at five P M, if you wanna go on the Skylift or whatever it's called, it's at four P M. Uh, but five P M is the start of the annual meeting and the awards dinner.
Okay.
And no cost to Rutland.
How long do these things usually run and what do they cover?
Uh, so there's a, I think the executive director gives a speech, the chair of the planning commission gives a speech, and then they hand out the awards, there's a whole itinerary online, I can send it to. Um, it's, uh, it'll probably be about two and a half hours.
Standard stuff.
Yeah, free mail.
Okay.
At Wachusett Mountain.
Thank you, Austin, is there any other business to come before the board? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, we'll call Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Galvin I.
Waitman I.